Good evening, everyone, to the Fitchburg Common Council meeting for April 9, 2024. The first thing is to call to the order to this meeting, and please stand up for the police or the legions. Next is roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor Alder Allen.
Present.
Mayor Radifrata.
Here.
Alder Gerhart.
Here.
Alder Herbst.
Here.
Alder Jetzer.
Here.
Alder Maldonado.
Here.
Alder Strassmann.
Here.
Alder Udell.
Here.
Alder Wheeler.
Here.
You do have a call, Mayor.
Thank you. So next, item four, public appearances for non-agenda items. So we have, then we have a couple of open public hearings, but we're going to start with Amy Sandborn for a non-agenda item. She's representing Mad Power Training Center. So, Amy, are you ready?
Yes, sure. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, you have three minutes, okay? And you can say your name and your address, okay?
Sure. It's Amy Sandborn, representing Mad Power Training on Verona Road in Fitchburg. To be brief, I've written it down. I apologize that I'm probably going to murder this name. I just wanted to say that Oscar Armilio, in this conditional use permit request, represents himself as an agent of Mad Power, when in fact, a lease for this building was signed in March by Rachel Bauer on behalf of her business, Club Groovy, the nightclub they are planning with World of Beer. I don't know whether this was an accident or an intention to deceive. I just want to make sure that Mad Power had, that it's understood Mad Power plays no part in this. I do think the description, the description of my use is inaccurate, but I believe he probably just is not privy to that knowledge. And you all know that my conditional use permit is accessory to the fitness business and very limited, rightly so. The last thing I want to note is that in his conditional use permit, he says that the Latino Chamber of Commerce may share their parking lot. And until yesterday, the Commerce had no knowledge that there even was a new tenant. So I just wanted to clear up any confusion as to whether my business was playing a role in this conditional use permit, and it's not.
Okay, thank you very much. So next, we are going to move with the next public hearing on ordinance 2024-0-03 and Plan Commission Resolution, PCR-01-24, adopting and recommending the Sprint of 2024 Amendment to the Comprehensive Plan, Amending MAP 4.3 Future Land Use Plan MAP and Land Use Plan in the Nine Spring Neighborhood Plan for a property located off of East Cheryl Parkway, especially from medium density residential to high density residential. So I am opening the public hearing, and we have a couple of residents that they want to speak, and I'm going to be calling you to the microphone. And remember, you have three minutes, and then you have to say your name, your address. And I'm going to call the first one, Jordan Bishop. He wishes to speak in support of the above matter. So where is Jordan? Oh, you are with the developer, isn't it? Okay, so no, okay. Wait a little bit. Logan Reistag, he wishes to speak in support. Sorry. Yeah.
All right. My name is Logan Reistag. I live at 5194 Sassafras Drive, number 203, here in Fitchburg, and I'm speaking in support of the rezoning and development project before you tonight and as it moves forward here throughout the city approval process. I previously sent you all a lengthy email detailing all the reasons why I support this project. I see some nodding heads, and for the sake of time, I won't reread that whole thing verbatim for you tonight, but I did want to give a little bit of context as to why I support this project. In 2022, about a year and a half ago, I was able to snag a one-bedroom condo in the Swan Creek neighborhood, and it was really just perfect fate. I was able to get in for $180,000 right before interest rates really went sky-high. And the reason I'm here tonight, though, is because people like me are being priced out of the Swan Creek neighborhood, and we're seeing this all over the city and really Dane County. A unit in our same association in the last few days just sold for $225,000. In a year and a half, that's an increase of 25% in value. And you'd think I'd be up here saying, hey, hey, that's great for me, that's a lot of equity, but that just really means that people like myself and my friends, the young professionals, people who are downsizing, are being priced out of our neighborhood. And one of the things that really attracted me about the Swan Creek neighborhood when I moved in August 2022 was that there's so many different housing types, and there's the single-family homes and duplexes and townhouses and condos. The project that is being proposed is another piece of that, and it gives another housing option, so that folks who are needing to move up or down in size of housing don't have to leave the neighborhood and they're able to still be in that community, depending on their life circumstances, if they're empty nesters, or if, you know, they get married and have kids and need to move to a bigger space. That's one of the reasons I really think that we should be prioritizing this type of infill development and finding parcels like this that have the water in the sewer already hooked up, and we already have bus service, and everything is very well-served. We don't have to expand and chew up more farmland, expand the urban service area, et cetera, in that direction. You know, I've heard some folks at some of the other public meetings say that, you know, this isn't the right type of housing that they'd want to see. You know, I say, as somebody who's in his late twenties and allergic to everything outside, I would love to have a single-family home but not have to mow the lawn and have a smaller lot. That sounds like a dream to me. I, you know, also respect the fact that other people may disagree, but nobody's forcing you to move into another option. It just gives you that flexibility for folks who want to move from one type of housing to another and stay in that community and keep our community strong with the same people and really keep that camaraderie intact. Now, before I conclude here, I want to wrap up and just encourage people who have maybe been in their homes for five, 10 years to take a look at the housing market and see what your money would get you today. I think of, you know, how things have changed since COVID, and I think it'd be really eye-opening for folks who have lived in any neighborhood, but especially Swan Creek, for 15, 20 years, see what you paid for that house when you moved in and see what it would buy you now. And you might be surprised that the supply and demand have really changed so much that what you were able to get is nowhere near what you could get today. So for those reasons, I'm in favor of this project, the rezoning, and just general missing middle housing developments in Fitchburg and all of Dane County.
Thank you very much. So the next two persons that I have are Fred DeVillers and Jordan Bishop. Do you want to speak now, or you want to wait when we discuss this during Plan Commission?
Yes, your question.
Okay, wait, wait, okay? Okay, I'm going to keep this. Okay, so do we have any other person that wishes to speak on this ordinance? No, so I am closing the public hearing for ordinance 2024-0-03. Next, I'm going to open the public hearing on ordinance 2024-0-04 and Plan Commission Resolution, PCR-02-24, adopting and recommending the Sprint of 2024 Amendment to the Comprehensive Plan, Amending MAP 4.3 Future Land Use Plan MAP for a property located off of Oak Middle Drive, especially from medium density residential to low density residential. Do we have anyone from this one? B, no? Okay, so I am, do we have anyone with this one? No, I am closing the public hearing. So next, C, I am opening the public hearing for, on ordinance 2024-0-05 and Plan Commission Resolution, PCR-03-24, adopting and recommending the Sprint 2024 Amendment to the Comprehensive Plan, Amending MAP 4.3 Future Land Use Plan MAP for a portion of a property located at 5540 Lazy Road, especially from PC Park and Conservancy to government and institutional. Do we have anyone to wish to speak here? No? Okay, I am closing the public hearing for this one, too. So next, we move to D, and I open the public hearing on ordinance 2024-0-06 and Plan Commission Resolution, PCR-04-24, adopting and recommending the Sprint 2024 Amendment to the Comprehensive Plan, Amending MAP 4.3 Future Land Use Plan MAP for properties associated with 2735 Rimrock Road, from low density residential to medium density residential. Okay, and we have a couple of people here, so. Okay, so now I will be calling people to the microphone. So first, I'm going to call Harvey Mathis. He wishes to speak. I don't know, is in support or in opposition? Okay, in support, okay, thank you. Okay, you have three minutes, Harvey.
My name is Harvey Mathis. I live in 95 Maloney Drive, Fitchburg, Wisconsin. I've been a resident there since 1979, and I enjoy the neighborhood, although it's changed considerably in that amount of time. Just to the east of my property is an Indian Springs development in the city of Madison, which is, I think there's 320 houses there, but much of the rest of the neighborhood really hasn't changed a great deal. The proposal for the current project that we're here to talk about represents, from my property, almost everything to the north and to the northwest. And so it's going to change, you know, my perspective, and it's been basically a large two-and-a-half-acre undeveloped piece of property that was basically used by the people that lived there to walk their dogs and things like that. It was, it's actually quite nice the way it is, but I understood from 1979 on that it probably wouldn't stay that way for long. It's probably lasted much longer than I expected. We, in the neighborhood, support the current plan of mix of single-family and townhomes. The transition of single-family homes in the east, close to the single-family neighborhood that already exists, and the townhomes to the west, near Rimrock Road, is what we understand will be the configuration of the property upon its completion. The support for this proposal by the neighbors came with the understanding that it would be limited to the 20 units of medium density. That will, that there will be no commercial use or high density and no traffic easement through the development. No easement through the development can be really accepted because Maloney Drive already got just an unusually large amount of traffic because it's one of the few main feeders that we have learned to accept from the city of Madison, the 320 houses that there's, I think, about four different main exits to that 320 units, and Maloney Drive, which was just a little dead-end country street, has really not changed much, except that the traffic is crazy. We most recently have heard that there is a proposal to create a new classification or what they are going to be calling a high and medium density, and it is of concern that this has been created, but it is also understood that this should not change the current plans in this development as it stands.
Harvey, your time is up.
Thank you.
No, thank you. Okay. So next is Matt Owensby, and next is Chad Ali.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your time. I'm Matt Owensby. I live on 79 Maloney Drive, which is directly across the street from this proposed development. I'd like to acknowledge the fact that I previously spoke in opposition of this development, but the developers have sat down with the neighborhood, including myself, walked through what the development was, addressed our concerns, and I am now speaking in favor of the proposed And I'm speaking in favor of the development tonight as proposed for 20 units, no greater than the specified medium density, and not to be used for any commercial uses. Also, one of the big, big points is that the units are going to be owner-occupied, as detailed in the plan, which is something I'm in favor of. And then I and many of the neighbors here support the plan under the condition that there isn't an easement for traffic through to the north side, so I'm only voicing my support with the understanding that there will be no traffic easement to the north. That, living on Maloney Drive myself, I will be directly impacted by all that traffic that could possibly come out to the front of my property. And as Harvey mentioned, there's a lot of traffic already that comes through the neighborhood. It's one of the main inlet roads to the neighborhood, and I've got a daughter who's going to be waiting outside for the bus each and every morning, and just from my perspective, for her safety, I'd like to keep that traffic as minimal as possible because the road can't really sustain much more traffic. So no easements to the north side. And I think I'd just like to give the developer props for meeting with each and every one of us, hearing our concerns. They've gotten our signatures, which has been provided in the agenda packet, showing our true support for the plan as it's stated. And overall, I guess I'm supportive about development, that there's no commercial use, there's 20 units, remains medium density, and there's no easements granted to the north side for traffic. I know it was touched on in the prior February meeting, the mayor noted that it was illogical for that traffic easement to come to Maloney Drive, so thank you for recognizing that and hearing the concerns of the neighborhood. So with that, that's all I have for you today, and just like to thank you all for your time throughout all of these meetings and here tonight, so thank you.
No, thank you. Next one is Chad Ali. Oh, you, okay, you can speak in your, when Plan Commission. Okay, sorry. So next is Diane Pease. She wishes to speak in support.
Yes, I live at 86 Maloney Drive in Fitchburg, and I've lived there since 78-79 era, and I appreciate the fact that the developers have been working with us, and they addressed a lot of our concerns. I support the medium-density proposal comprising of the 20 units, but because this area, it cannot, we cannot have people coming any more than the 20 units because this is, we get so much traffic. In fact, when I was, and I was in the town of Madison, so, and I'm right next to that lot, the two acres. So we need to make sure that that is just those 20 units and that there is no through traffic from the traffic, from the houses, the land to the north, because this would just make it impossible on that street. It is a narrow street, and with the, all of the traffic coming from the city, because we are one of the main outlets there, one of the few, and, you know, it just makes it very difficult. Anyway, sometimes it's hard to get out onto Rimrock, and it's hard to get out on Maloney sometimes, so I just want to make sure that it's just this acreage that is considered. Plus, that's a lot of people coming in, and we don't need any more coming through, so. And it is going to take some restructuring of the street. That is a big concern of mine, too. So the town of Madison was considered enough when they put the city in, because the city did not make the developer of the city land put in the needed drainage systems. We had to take it, and so the town of Madison put in ditches on each side of my driveway so that my front yard was not flooded and my house was not flooded. So that's going to have to be restructured anyways when they redo the street. But just wanted to express my concern that we don't get any more people coming out there than the 20 units and the fact that the developers have been working with us. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. So next, I am calling to Luke Hayer. He wishes to speak in support.
Yeah, I guess it's kind of a wavering support now. I'm not much of a conspiracy theorist, but holy cow, I never heard the word "no easement" so much before. It really sounds to me like they are throwing the three acres to the north under the bus so that they can get their development, right? Is that what's going on? Because nobody had a problem with an easement the last four times I came here and talked and said that that was probably the most important part of this development, is to make sure that all five acres are treated appropriately and not left to blight or just turn into empty fields. You really can't put single-family homes on those three acres to the north. So really, there's two options as far as traffic can go. The correct option would be to have an easement down to Maloney, even though it sounds bad. What we would then do is make Maloney a controlled intersection with stoplights, which would make left turns out of there easy and make everybody on that road much happier. Another option would be to take 89th, parallel 89th, whatever the road is that comes in above it, it goes right into the middle of my property. You can make that a four-way intersection and also have that one controlled. Now, that would make my property basically the gateway to these five acres, and it would take all the traffic off of Maloney. So those are two options I've been throwing around, but I really don't know what part of the process this all gets covered, and quite frankly, I'm a little shocked that all of a sudden there's all these meetings. I shared the longest border with this property. I had no clue about single-family homes, 20 units, easements, any of this type of stuff. I've been completely out of the loop. I literally just got their number before the meeting today, so when they talk about meeting with all the neighbors, they have not been meeting with me. So like I said, my support is very wavering. I feel like I've been kind of lied to or at least left out of a very important part here, so technically, I'm in support, but I really think that the council and the planning commission should really take into consideration developing this right with proper traffic flow for all five acres and not just allow the first one in to get what they want and throw everybody else under the bus. I'm open for questions.
No, thank you very much.
All right.
So next one is Mark Chevista. He wishes to speak in support.
Hi, my name is Mark Chevista, and I live at 2930 Salem Drive, adjacent to the development proposed at 2735 Rimrock Road. I just wanted to make it clear that the previous speaker is not a neighbor, he is a developer as well. So when we say that the neighbors were involved in these meetings, it means just that. I do not oppose the proposed medium-density development for the Olive Tree Residences at 2735. I do oppose any plans for high-density or commercial developments to the east of Rimrock Road. I support the developers' decision to deny access to neighboring properties via the Common Access Road that would empty onto Maloney Drive. It is my belief that those properties would be best suited by an intersection at Rimrock Road and 89th Degree Road. Infrastructure for stoplights already exists at that intersection, and I thank you for your time.
Well, thank you. Okay, so Sean Higgins, Aisha, and Chad Ali, you will speak during the Plan Commission, okay? Okay, a little bit more, so I have you here. Okay, so anyone else want to speak on this ordinance? Nope? Okay, I am closing the public hearing for this one. Thank you to everyone. So next, we move to item five is a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose, the motion carries.
Your Honor, I would move to amend the agenda to take up item 9A at this point.
Okay. There is a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor to move an item, what it was, Jay?
9A.
9A, before the administrator reports, say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose, the motion carries. So, okay, who is going to speak here? Where is, okay, one second.
I can kind of kick this off to Chris's coming up. You can come up, too, as well. But obviously, council postponed action on this claim, I think, two meetings ago. That afforded some additional time for the VFW post-leadership, as well as city assessing staff to assess the situation further. I guess no pun intended with the use of assessing the situation further. So, Chris, obviously, our city assessor is here tonight, can talk about the additional steps that were taken to take a look at what portion of this property may be exempted. I think it is noteworthy just to kind of recall or remind folks that the original action claim that had been submitted was denied with cause, and in accordance with our city attorney, she believes that that was a defensible denial. But obviously, the postponement by the city council allowed additional conversation here, and also an amendment to the claim was submitted by the VFW that was included in the packet this evening. Chris, is there anything, actually, who would you like to speak next there?
Okay, so we have a person who wants to speak is Gundal Metz. She wishes to speak in support, so, okay.
Good evening. My name is Gundal Metz, and I live at 5194 Sassafras Drive, Unit 201, and I am what you call the quartermaster or the chief financial officer of the VFW. And I want to educate a little bit on the VFW, because everybody says we have a canteen, it's a business. Yes, but that is a very small portion of what we do. That is to provide the community with a fun place, a good place, to come, enjoy good food, camaraderie, listen to good music. We have live music there, karaoke, trivia, so, and we, you know, as Ray pointed out last month, for our, for the law enforcement, firefighters, if they want to come and use our hall for free for meetings or for a gathering of any type, it's free to them. People that have, especially veterans, who pass away, they want to do a memorial service, we allow them to use the post for that. That's honoring our veterans. And what you may not understand is I have three checking accounts. And what you may not understand is I have three checking accounts. The first one is the canteen, which is what's considered the bar. So, the money the bar brings in, that pays for the bills for the bar, for the employees, everything. Then the other ones is, as we are a 501(c)(19), a nonprofit, is called our general fund. And underneath that general fund, I have a building fund, which is that building, which is the property of the nonprofit side of the house. And that building fund is at Oak Bank, because that's where we got the loan to buy the, purchase the building. And the rent from our renter goes into the building fund. It does not go into the canteen fund. It does not go into the rest of the general fund. That is for maintenance of the building and the properties. Then the general fund we have, we ought to have underneath that also what's called a relief fund. And that is to provide donations that we do for Toys for Tots, the food pantries in the area, veteran who has some needs, the POW project, MIA project at the UW. Those kind of things are, and then the rest of the general fund is what we do for, if the VFW itself wants to do something. Our VFW, and I do want to thank council member Alan and Strassman for spending time and speaking with me and Jay for you coming out to meet with us, too. Is, as I explained, the VFW is going to be 100 years old in January of next year. This is only the third home of that VFW. So, we don't move around much. We try to take care of the area. We try to take care of the community also. So, in the amendment that you see, we ask that after conferring with Chris and meeting with Chris and talking with Chris on the phone, I don't know how many times, and doing this quickly, so that we request the amendment art from the claim from 25 January, 24, from $16,143.47 to $13,942.49 per the official assessment completed by your assessor, Chris Lights. So, that's what we are asking for. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Chris, can you explain the assessment and the amendment?
Yeah, so, I guess to kind of get into the technical details, what we ended up doing, myself and Craig Olson, who's our deputy city assessor, he handles a lot of the commercial stuff, we went out there, we got some plans for just kind of the layout of the facility. And what we came out to was the bar area, the bar and kitchen area would be taxable. That represents roughly, I forget what it was, oh, about just under 50% or just over 50% of the first floor, the second floor, there's no, I think, disagreement here that that would be taxable. So, then the remainder of the square footage of the building, which is kind of a, like a meeting area, banquet kind of hall area, and then kind of more closed-off meeting rooms that are used by the post, you know, work on these offices and a number of other spaces. So, what I, what we ended up doing to get to our value was figured out the exempt square footage, figure out the potential taxable square footage, and got to, you know, what would have been the assessed value had they submitted their form a little over a year ago. So, what we get to for the value then is $717,300. And then I conferred with our finance director, Misty Dodge, to figure out what that tax amount would have been, you know, with this updated value. And then the claim, or the amendment to the claim, as you have before you here, is just the difference between what the tax bill, what was paid and what was initially issued versus what it would have been. You know, should the process have gone, you know, the normal, through the normal avenue. So, I don't know, if there's any more questions, I'm happy to answer them. I have, you know, a sketch and a floor plan and all that kind of stuff. I don't know if you want to see that, but any questions you guys might have, I'm happy to answer.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Any questions? Jay?
Well, before I get into some discussion here, I'm going to move approval of this claim.
Second.
Okay.
All right, so, yeah, this was, the VFW, places like the VFW and the American Legion, they, they provide valuable services to the city. And even though it may not be stuff you see every day, the fact that they are there and they're supporting, they're supporting the community in many ways, kind of like our senior center does. I mean, our senior center, you don't necessarily know it's there every day, but it's doing good work. And I, I appreciate the VFW, I appreciate the work that they've done. And, I mean, it is a tax-exempt organization, so I think this is the right direction for us to go. And I, again, want to thank the council for postponing this a couple of meetings ago so that we could get it right, and I think we've got it right now.
Okay, so I want to clarify something, Jay, is we are, your motion is to approve the amendment to the claim.
No, well, I mean, I guess we could do that.
Yeah, isn't it?
Then we got to do two motions.
No.
Oh, I see.
No, just clarifying that they amended their claim and that you're, your approval.
Right, okay. That's fine. Whatever we're approving, let's.
Okay, I just want to be sure.
Let's just approve something.
Any other questions, comments? No? Okay, all those in favor of the amendment to the claim, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the motion carries. Okay, thank you. No, thank you. Okay, so now we are, let me see where we are.
Administrator's report.
Administrator's report.
Good evening, everyone. I've got quite a few items here. I'll start with some events or other meetings that you may want to be aware of. First one is the Transportation Transit Commission is meeting this Thursday at 6:30 PM here at City Hall. There will be an update by Madison Metro on the BRT and the locally preferred route. There are also going to be some public meetings held regarding BRT, including one, I believe, on April 29th that will be held in North Pittsburgh. We'll look to get some information out on that one soon. April 16th, I'm sorry, April, yes, April 16th, as a reminder, is the organizational meeting next Tuesday, so please put that on your calendars for those of you who are returning for another term with us. April 17th, the Pittsburgh Chamber is hosting their Biz After Four, beginning at 4:00 PM at Me and Julio's. The Senior Center is hosting the Pancake Breakfast, April 21st, from 8:00 AM to 12:00 noon at the Senior Center. And I believe Mayor Aratafra da shared this information with you, but I wanted to confirm you saw it via email. There is a joint event with Mad Rep and Dane County Executive Joe Parisi regarding federal funding for clean energy projects and economic development. That'll be April 24th, from 10:00 AM to 11:30 AM here at City Hall. Pre-registration is requested for that in the email that had been shared with you. City staff has submitted and is considering, or not considering, and will be submitting a couple of grant applications here, one of which was Senator Baldwin's office had congressionally-directed spending requests. There were three requests submitted under that program, the teen center, sustainability features regarding the police services facility and the water tower on the east side of the city. And Dane County Human Services just recently put out a grant application for the cares program, looking to extend that into first-string municipalities adjacent to the city of Madison. That grant application is due April 17th. Been working with city staff and we will be submitting an application, so more information will be shared in the coming weeks and months as we get deeper into that process. We had a meeting last week regarding the police services facility with city staff as well as construction management firm and the architectural design firm. That meeting was to discuss the proposed reductions and cuts to the first submitted project that the council had considered back in mid-February. What our hope is, is that there will be a programmatic and schematic design resolution being presented to the council in May for consideration and direction on next steps on that project. Wanted to let everybody know, we've talked about this, we're using ARPA funding to fix an issue and actually replace our chiller at the library. I'm pleased to say that that work began this week, so there is currently no heating and cooling at the library. However, we are very fortunate, the weather is cooperating so far with us, but we estimate that that chiller will be replaced over the next two weeks and then we will be fully operational again there in the library. Also want to let you know that based on our capital improvement plan, preliminary resolutions to begin the 2024 debt issuance process are intended to be direct referred at the next council meeting. You've also received some emails from Deputy City Administrator Adam Sayer regarding the city strategic plan that the city is working on. Please check your emails. There is information to set up, in particular, your one-on-one with the consultant completing that strategic plan. There's also additional information contained within those emails, so I encourage you to review that and if you have questions, reach out to Adam or I. Referendum, the consultant continues to process and summarize the survey responses. Told that they have received over 2,000 responses to the survey. They will be presenting those results at the April 24th Committee of the Whole Meeting. After you, we've gone through that presentation on the survey results, staff will be having conversation with council to determine whether or not you have a desire or interest in proceeding with a referendum. And if so, what dollar amount and what would you include, a request to be included within that dollar amount, will be the information that staff would need in order to then begin to prepare a question for council consideration, likely at the May 14th City Council meeting. And then finally, two thank yous. One to Alders, Udell, and Strassman. I know your terms are ending, this is your last meeting. Thank you for your service to our community. And I also want to thank our clerk, Tracy, her team, our building maintenance, public works, IT, and poll workers for their efforts at the election last week as well. Any questions for me?
Can you mention the joint?
The Joint Review Board?
Yeah.
Yes, and we also have the Joint Review Board Organizational Meeting, April 16th at 3:00 PM. That is in regards to the creation of Tax Increment District Number 18, which is in the area of Commerce Park Drive and Sub-Zero Parkway.
Thank you. Okay, Jay?
Yeah, Chad, as we're going to be starting with a new council next week, there are some, there are some major frustrations I've had over the last year, year and a half. And I just, you know, some of them I've talked with you about, some of them I've just been frustrated with. And I, and in talking to other council members, I've heard some of the same frustrations. Things like the decision that council members are not allowed to have city letterhead to send letters to our constituents. Objections that you have had to me sending emails to constituents. Objections that you have had to me meeting with constituents. And another thing that just has driven me nuts is I've, I've mentioned several times to you that I wanted to be part of the work group working on the referendum and you just simply ignored that request multiple times. And I can guarantee you that if there was a member of the, of the council on that work group, the, the survey that went out would have looked significantly different than what we got. So, as we're going to be starting with a new council, you know, the council members, we are the elected people. We are the ones who are the policymakers for the city. And I know that you have this desire to, to kind of control the way things are going, but that's not, that's not your role when it comes to council members. We are the ones who are accountable directly to the voters of this city and we need to be involved in what's going on and we need to have, rather than having objections from city staff about our involvement, we need to have support. So, that was really the, what I wanted to say at this point.
Okay, thank you. Any other common questions for Chad? Nope? Okay. So, next we move to commissions and committee reports and plan commission. We are going to start with plan commission, so Gabriela.
Yeah, I want to move to amend the agenda to take up Plan Commission Item A2 first.
Yeah, because the two are related.
Yeah.
Okay.
We just need to do them in different order.
Yeah.
It's already, we already amended the agenda.
Oh, we did?
Yes.
Oh, okay, I'm following my.
I'm sorry, I must have downloaded this earlier. Okay, great. So, I will move approval of Ordinance 2024003 and Plan Commission Resolution PCR0124, adopting and recommending the Spring 2024 Amendment to the Comprehensive Plan, Amending MAP 4.3 Future Land Use Plan MAP and Land Use Plan in the Nine Springs Neighborhood Plan for property located off East Cheryl Parkway, specifically from MDR Medium Density Residential to HDR High Density Residential.
Second.
Okay, can you explain what it is?
Yes, so this is a development, well, this is a change to the comp plan that changes the future land use, so it is, it is done in anticipation of this potential development, but obviously, there's future steps to make this happen. But this development is a 60-unit, single-family home on this, this lot that's off of Cheryl Drive. It, under medium-density residential, the max you could have would be 54 units on that lot. The change to high-density residential is to make it 60, so it's a slight raise, but it's, it's not a huge increase. And the staff did report that, you know, the traffic volume in the neighborhood was originally projected to include retail and schools, which are not going to happen, and they, they're confident that that current, that the addition of this development won't have a traffic impact. A couple of things to note, obviously, we had some public testimony in support of the resolution. I will note that the, some of the neighborhood, some of the people in the neighborhood did come out with concerns about traffic and then also just concerns that, about reducing, about changing it to high-density. Specifically, I think there was a lot of people that thought that maybe we would end up building a big apartment building instead of this development and in anticipation of, make sure that it matches kind of what this is promised, the plan department put together that resolution that's coming next, which changes the comprehensive development plan to make sure that, that, that lot stays at 60 units, because it has to match the comprehensive development plan. So, that's coming next. Yeah, and I, I'll stop there.
Did Plan Commission approve this?
Yes, approved.
Okay, so I have two, I have the developer here, Fred DeVillers, and also Jordan Bishop. So, do you want to comment about the project? Add anything?
Fred DeVillers, representing IP Holdings, address is 5210 Siglau Road, Madison, Wisconsin. Just here to answer any questions. I had followed up after talking with staff and getting essentially permission to follow up with you separately with more information I had emailed that last Friday. If there's any questions on either that information or the information as part of the original application, I'm just here to answer anything that you may have.
And like you mentioned, I'm Jordan Bishop. I am co-developing the property of Fred. I also am a Realtor with Star Company Realtors, so I'm also here to, you know, answer any questions relating to this project's market impacts as well as honestly, general market implications currently that we're seeing for people looking to buy and sell and how this interacts in a positive manner relating to the general market as a whole for, for that kind of question, so.
Thank you. Diana, do you want to add anything else? No? Okay, so, okay, Jay?
Oh, but I want to ask Diana a question. So, when we first started talking about this, my expectation was that this is going to be PDD zoning, is that what our plan is?
I do expect that this will come forward as PDD zoning, next.
So, just for any of the residents out there that still have concerns about what might happen, PDD gives the city a lot more control over how something actually plays out in specific terms. And so, I, I- And so I, I, you know, there were, there were a lot of comments at the public meetings about, you know, people afraid that if it went to high-density housing, it was going to be 10,000 units there, because unfortunately, our zoning code, the way it is right now, doesn't have, it doesn't have the right gradients when you get to higher-density levels. And so high-density residential is basically unlimited. But we're not going to build an unlimited development there, and I think the second resolution with the Comprehensive Development Plan that limits it to 60 units, and that's all that's going to be there. And so I think, I think this is a good plan. Originally, the proposal was 67 units, which I also thought was a good plan, but as a compromise, the developer brought it down to 60. But I do want the council to think about this, because over the next year, we need to figure some things out with housing, because even with both of these projects that, that people are here for tonight, we're looking at $400,000 houses. And there's a, there's a lot of people who live in Pittsburgh, and as I pointed out before, most of our city staff can't even qualify for a mortgage in those kind of stratospheric ranges. So I don't think the council's intent is to try to gentrify the city, but this kind of seems to be where we're headed, just because that's where the market is right now. So we need to, we need to do some things to actually affect this, and I hope that we will make that happen over the next year.
Okay, thank you. Any other comment? Bill?
Later on this evening, we're going to be taking up Ordinance 2024-07 that introduces the medium-high density.
We are postponing.
We're postponing. Never mind what I just said.
Any other comment? Okay, I, I, I think this is, you know, is a great infill parcel. We are, look, this one is, we are looking at how to fix a missing middle, the, you know, housing issue that we have in the city. And I am fully support of this project, you know, and I hope that we can build those soon, so. Okay, any other comment? No? Okay, all those in favor of, it's the ordinance, isn't it? The ordinance? All those in favor of the Ordinance 2024-0-03 and Plan Commission Resolution PCR-01-24, say aye.
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 Any opposed, the motion carries. Thank you. Next one, Gabriela.
I move approval of Resolution R4024, approving Comprehensive Development Plan Request CDP 253224 by Fred DeVillers, Agent for IP Holdings LLC, to amend the Swan Creek Comprehensive Development Plan to allow the construction of 60 high-density detached units in the Swan Creek Development on property located at the corner of East Cheryl Parkway and Crinkle Route Drive.
Second.
Did Plan Commission approve?
Yes.
Okay, what is this?
So this is the accompanying resolution, and specifically what this does, is it amends the Comprehensive Development Plan for the neighborhood, which is a more specific neighborhood plan that gets more into the details for the individual lots. And with this change, it will keep that, that lot as a max of 60 units. So even though the high-density residential is part of the future land use, they cannot build over the 60 if we amend this Comprehensive Development Plan in this way.
Any other comment? Okay.
Yeah, just one question, Deanna, since you're still here. So this says 60 high-density detached units. Does this eliminate the possibility of building some of these as duplexes, which the developer had suggested they wanted to do?
No, I mean, in, I'm sorry, that wasn't totally clear here, but in the actual planning document, duplexes are allowed.
Okay. Should we remove that word detached?
You are welcome to.
All right, I'm going to amend this to remove the word detached.
I can take that as a friendly amendment, that's okay.
All those in favor of the, oh, do you want to?
Oh, I think I, I think it's, it's within the spirit of the resolution, I don't think we need to vote on it.
Okay.
Well, I guess moving beyond Jay's amendment, if we're that far, I guess I just had, I'm looking at the, the drawing, and they, it does show 60 single-family detached homes. I'm just wondering, you know, in terms of economics for, for construction, energy efficiency, wouldn't it be better to build these as, you know, townhomes, rowhouses essentially, so they, they have shared walls?
You could make that assumption, but at the same time, it doesn't get you anywhere, because right now, with construction costs the way they are, you're not developing economies of scale, which is right, this is why the missing middle exists. There's basically two types of housing on an aggregate that are being built, smaller houses and very large apartment buildings. It's, it's next to impossible now with construction costs to do a two or a four or a six-unit building.
Okay, so simply taking these, you know, whatever, 20 single-family detached homes, making them a little wider, sharing a wall, so that you have, you know, better thermal mass, lower heating and cooling load for the next 100 years, that's not an option.
I develop for my day job, this is just a personal project, and we currently have subcontractors that won't even bid a project if it's more, if it's less than 100 units. It's just not economically feasible for suppliers and general, and subcontractors to even make the numbers work. There's very few projects that are less than very large that are, that are even penciling out economically because of the cost of construction, because of cost of land, of cost, of cost of everything that goes into a project.
Okay, so you're saying that building townhomes is more expensive than single-family detached?
On a per address basis, yes, because the last, the last time I appeared at this table was two and a half years ago, and I had townhomes. All the builders that are previously interested in that became uninterested once construction costs and interest rates are up, which is why I had to go back to the drawing board.
I'm still confused. I guess, and if I could just have a follow-up here, these, these 60 homes that are going to be constructed, you know, 2024 and beyond, these will not be hooked up to fossil fuels for heating, will they? These will be using heat pumps?
There's natural gas in the street, and I can guarantee you the home builders are going to utilize that natural gas.
So we're going to continue ruining the climate forever?
When it housing, when it, it's like catch 22. Okay, any other comment? Jay?
So, so looking at this revised plan, did, did you give up on the idea of building the duplexes along Crinkle Route like we had talked about before?
No, there are, there are four duplexes, eight units along Crinkle Route, because I have a builder that's interested in those.
Okay, so this map that we see here is not what you're actually going to build, probably?
Correct.
Because this is showing six units along Crinkle Route.
Yeah, well, we, we had changed that, I'm not quite sure why the packet wasn't updated.
Yeah, things happen. You know, this is, this is the January 23 plan, so you know, it's, that's how it goes.
That should be the correct, the January 23 plan, I think, did have the duplexes on it. Regardless.
Well, not the one that I'm looking at. I mean, it's right there. But that's okay, as long as you're still planning on building some duplexes, that's fine.
Correct.
Any other question, comment? So when are you planning to, to move forward with this development?
Well, the next phase is to submit the, submit it for the PDDGIP, which is the 23rd of this month.
Okay. But you're planning to build if everything is approved this year?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, any other comment, question? Okay, all those in favor of Resolution R-40-24, say aye.
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 Any opposed, the resolution carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
I move approval of Ordinance 2024-004 and Plan Commission Resolution PCR-0224, adopting and recommending the Spring 2024 Amendment to the Comprehensive Plan, amending MAP 4.3 Future Land Use Plan MAP for property located off Oak Meadow Drive, specifically from MDR Medium Density Residential to LDR Low Density Residential.
Second.
Okay, what is this?
And Plan Commission did approve this.
Yes, okay.
So this is, this is a lot, a series of lots off of Fish Atrey Road, not directly off of, but parallel to Fish Atrey Road. And it was originally intended as medium-density residential for condos. I'm not, I'm not clear if it was townhouses or, or, you know, bigger condo building, but it was originally intended for condos. Apparently, that's been undeveloped for 10 years, it's been vacant for 10 years. And I think, like we've already discussed, the, the owners decided that the market is not, it's not possible to build that for whatever reason. So they would like to subdivide the land and sell it to owners to build their own homes. I believe the plan is for, assuming that this passes, because this is just a change to the future land use, not a zoning, but the plan would be to create 11 lots that would be sold to families, so they could build their own homes. And honestly, the, the Plan Commission, just to give you some insight, had a lot of challenges with this resolution. So on one hand, like, we should be building higher density, I think, in a lot of ways, because we need more homes, especially because this is along the Fish Atrey Corridor, it's a more dense area, it's walkable, it seems like it's a good place for higher density. That being said, it's been undeveloped for 10 years, and we need more housing. So I think there was kind of like a, we, it was, it was a decision that I think we, we had a challenging time deciding, so, yeah.
Yeah, I agree with you. So I don't have your form, so I don't know who you are.
It's fun.
Can you fill out your form when you're done?
Yeah, I will.
Can you say your name and who are you representing?
Yeah, I'm Chris Dawson, and I work for JSD. I am here as a representative of the property owner.
Do you want to add anything else to this?
Really just here for?
Questions?
Any questions?
Any question for Gabriela? Comments? Okay.
So this is within half a mile of the corner of, of Lacy and Fish Atrey Road, and we're going to make, you know, every effort to get BRT down to that corner. I just, I, I can't, I can't vote for downzoning this to, to low-density. That just doesn't make sense.
Okay, any other comment? Jay?
Well, what is the size of this parcel?
About 3.3 acres.
Yeah. You know, here's the bottom line, I mean, even if we built at, even if we built something like what, what, even if we built at 20 dwelling units an acre, it's only going to be 60 dwelling units. That's not going to matter a hill of beans to BRT. It's just not going to, that's not anything even close to what it would take to tip the scales. But I, I don't support, I do not support lowering the density here. I see no, I mean, okay, it's been undeveloped for 10 years. I mean, right outside our back door here, there's property that's been undeveloped that's owned by Bill Linton for 25 years. I, I think this is the, I think it's time to let, I mean, if it's waited for 10 years, it can wait a few more years till market conditions change, and we can get something, something higher valued. This is going to be, I mean, even if you build, even if you build $400,000 houses on these 11 lots, that's going to be $4 million, there's a lot more value that could be had there than, than that amount. So I don't, I do not support this, and I'm going to vote against it.
Okay, any other comment? You're, you're going to?
One thing that this, this proposal, at least as shown right now, if you happen to look at this particular exhibit, you'll notice there's an Outlot, Outlot 2. That is really very specifically a leftover parcel, more or less, that has some utility for the higher-density development that the Future Land Use Plan calls for along Fish Atrey Road. Outlot 1 actually has a 30-foot-wide access corridor, not necessarily dedicated, but intended to provide additional access to said development in the future as well. So while this is not the highest density for the area, it is helping to tee up the higher density that is proposed in the future, and not to piggyback off of the previous person, but this is the market we're in. The site overall does have a significant grade change to it, so having the larger footprint building pads for multifamily duplexes, quadplexes, all that, does present some challenges to a degree as well. So with the single-family homes, there's a little bit more relief there, and just from experience, for what the property owner has seen so far, even after our public meetings, he has gotten more interest in the parcels than he had in the previous 10 years from participants at the meeting that would like to buy the homes.
Jay?
Yeah, I don't doubt that for one minute. I'm quite sure that if we went out and we rezoned and we offered, offered up a bunch of quarter-acre lots, that there would be no end of developers willing to take those. But that doesn't mean that's what's in the city's best interest as we move forward. The, the parcels that are along Fish Atrey Road are in our plan for redevelopment at some point, because those houses are getting pretty old, and I'm sure that at some point the residents who live there aren't going to be all that thrilled about dealing with the traffic on Fish Atrey Road, trying to get out of their driveways. In addition to that, we have the iHeartRadio property that is right nearby, and it just, this, this is the first time, I've been involved in Pittsburgh government for 30 years, and this is the first time I've heard somebody come forward and say, oh, we want to build a bunch of quarter-acre lots to put single-family houses on, because that's going to quote-unquote "tee up" the high-density housing that's in the plan for this other area. That's just a statement that makes, that doesn't, that doesn't even follow logic. That's just a, that's just a silly statement that makes no sense. So it's, it's not a convincing point.
The proposal in front of you, it happens to be a byproduct.
Well, I don't think it's a byproduct.
Okay. Okay, any other, Gabriela?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I, like I said, not just the Plan Commission, I also struck up with this amendment, because we do need more housing, but we also did a discussion about the iHeartRadio property and how we hope to bring kind of more high-density with, with a larger amount of units, to help make, make that bus route more feasible. But yeah, upon further reflection, I, I just, I don't think I can support this. I, yeah.
Okay. Any other comments? No? Okay, I'm going to do roll call, because we have some people that, they are in disagreement.
One last suggestion.
Okay.
With the land that is usable for housing in this particular parcel, obviously, at some point, some of the land would have to be dedicated to stormwater management, which you see that in Outlot 1. Outlot 1 is the flag parcel at the, there you go.
Okay.
Yes. So the arguably usable space within this actual parent parcel is roughly three acres. So even at the medium-density, that would be, I believe, and Deanna, not to make you come up to the mic again, but I think that that would maximize at 18 units for this parcel, if it is to remain as it's currently planned.
Medium-density is five to nine, so.
Okay, so 27.
27 would be the max at medium-density.
There. We'll leave it at that.
Okay, thank you. Evrani?
Plan Commission approved this, correct?
Yes.
It was not unanimous, but yes.
Okay, we are going to do roll call.
It was five to two, right? Is that what I'm seeing in the packet?
No, I think it was six, one.
Six, one.
But I, I voted yes for it, to clarify. I, I did at the time, but, yeah.
What was, can you summarize any of the opposition?
Yeah, I mean, I think it was just a disinterest in reducing the density. Like, I just, it just seems crazy when we need housing to reduce the density of a lot. I think that was the, the crux of the struggle. Is there anything I'm missing, Mayor?
Yeah, no, it was, it was that. There were two persons that voted down. Yeah, it was about, you know, why we are doing that when we are keeping, increasing the density in other areas. But, you know, I, I supported that because I understand your, your position, Jay, and your position, Bill, but also we, you know, this parcel has been empty for many years and now we have an opportunity to build some houses that, you know, blend with the neighborhood that is there. And also, we discussed in length the heart property and what we ambition with that, bring all the density in that corner. So, so, yeah, okay.
Well, I mean, the neighborhood consists of a bunch of condos. So...
It's a mix. It's a mix. It's our houses and condos.
Well, but on this side of Oak Meadow Drive, it's condos. So why we would build these quarter-acre lots, it just doesn't, 11, 11 units isn't going to make a hill of beans different to the, to the housing need that we have in Pittsburgh. And, and these are undoubtedly going to be more houses in the $400,000 to $500,000 range. And that's not what Pittsburgh needs. What we need is stuff that is a lot less expensive. And if, I mean, I, I think there's a time to draw a line and say, this is, this is what we need and this is the direction we need to go. And, you know, as someone who's now paying, who, as of my lease renewal, is going to be paying $2,200 a month in rent, something needs to change. And this is not the change we need.
Okay. Any final comments or we can move on? No? Okay, so roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Alder Allen?
No.
Alder Gerhardt?
No.
Alder Herbst?
Aye.
Alder Jutser?
No.
Alder Maldonado?
Nay.
Alder Strassman?
Aye.
Alder Udell?
Aye.
Alder Wheeler?
Aye.
You have a tie, four of four.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, so next we move to, next one, Gabriela.
I just need to get my agenda up again, hang on. Okay, I move approval of...
Can I do a point of order first?
Yes.
I would like to change my vote on that last vote to aye.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay.
Not because I support it, but because I want to, I may want to bring it up for reconsideration.
Okay.
Okay, can I continue?
Yes.
I move approval of ordinance 2024-005, Plan Commission, and Plan Commission Resolution PCR-0324, adopting and recommending the Spring 2024 Amendment to the Comprehensive Plan, amending MAP 4.3 Future Land Use Plan MAP for the portion of property located at 5540 Lacy Road, specifically from PNC Parks and Conservancy to GI Government Institutional.
One second.
Second.
Did the Plan Commission approve?
Yes.
Okay, what is this?
So this is the, the lot in front of the library that will eventually be used as the police station. So it was originally dedicated as parkland and it was, Carpsy had labeled it an environmental corridor, but they've been, done an, an analysis and will release it for the part that we're going to actually develop as this police station. And we had the discussion about wanting to make sure we limit the impervious surface, but that, as you've seen the plans, there's going to be significant land that's not disturbed as part of the project.
Okay. Do you want to add anything else? Deanna?
I can, I'm more than happy to take any questions, but what we're just requesting for a portion of the site, the majority of the site to the north and to the west will remain in environmental corridor. The portion not in environmental corridor will, is proposed to change from Parks and Conservancy to Government Institutional in the Future Land Use MAP. That is the same thing that we have here for the City Hall and the library.
Okay, thank you. Any comments, question? Okay, all of us in favor of ordinance 2024-0-05 and Plan Commission Resolution PCR-0324, say aye.
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 Any votes? The motion carried.
Nay. I would like my no vote specifically recorded in the minutes.
Okay, so we have a no vote. Okay. Next one.
I move approval of ordinance 2024-006 and Plan Commission Resolution PCR-0424, adopting and recommending the Spring 2024 Amendment to the Comprehensive Plan, amending MAP 4.3 Future Land Use Plan MAP for the property associated with 2735 Rimrock Road, from Low Density Residential, LDR, to Medium Density Residential, MDR.
Second.
Did Plan Commission approve?
Yes.
Okay, what is this?
So this is the property, we actually discussed this before, but as you heard in the testimony, this is a new, same developers, but kind of a new idea for the property. The medium-density residential will allow for 20 units. And I believe, oh gosh, I don't have the notes here, but, but it's going to be a mix of townhomes and then a few single-family homes. The single-family homes are going to be nearer to the current homes and then the townhomes will be closer to the road. So different orientation than before and slightly, slightly lower density and without the daycare space, if you remember, that was originally part of the plan.
Okay, so we have a couple of people, the developers, and we have Sean Higgins. He's a UW Madison School of Planning Landscape Architect. He wishes to speak in support. And also, we have Aisha Liakad, she's a developer. Her father, Chad Ali. Okay, so Sean, are you planning to...
Good evening, everybody. I realize that some of you heard my prepared remarks at the Plan Commission, so I apologize that I'm going to read you exactly the same thing or a version thereof. Thanks for the chance to speak about this land use map change. And thank you for being here tonight, taking time out of your day. That's, and that goes to everybody in the audience as well. Without attendance at public meetings and people willing to serve on council and commissions and committees, the planning process doesn't work. My name is Sean Higgins. I'm a practicing urban planner. I work for the Capital Area Regional Planning Commission, also known as Carpsy. But I'm actually here tonight as a university instructor and advisor. This past fall, I had the honor of teaching Urban Planning 611. It's an urban design course at the Department of Planning and Landscape Architecture. As many of you are aware, the Wisconsin idea aims to put in, put that influence and knowledge from the university into practice, influencing people's lives beyond the boundaries of the university. And that's how I ended up here. One of my students, Tyler Franklin, who sadly isn't able to join us tonight, worked on behalf of the city with the developer of this project and neighborhood residents and businesses this past fall and through the spring semester to come up with a conceptual design. The point I want to emphasize is the process that's gotten us here. The development team worked with the neighbors, with business owners, to arrive at a preliminary design concept that addresses concerns expressed and the desires of the various parties involved. To date, the project has brought together professionals with unique experience, outside entities such as the Department of Planning and Landscape Architecture, for additional perspective and assistance, and the people whose homes and businesses are affected by development along Rimrock Road. To date, this project has been a good example of planning as a process. The developer has demonstrated commitment to collaboration and creative solution finding as well as compromise. And I think that these factors will serve the city well as this project works its way through further refinement. So I would urge the council to approve the amendment to its Comprehensive Plan MAP to prevent this project going forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Aisha, do you want to speak?
Thank you so much again for looking at our proposal for a second time. And I do thank the neighbors for coming out and showing support as well. So a couple of things that I wanted to highlight that have changed since the last time we came forward, as you know, we have revised the site plan, we have removed the daycare, which was a big point of contention, a lot of neighborhood opposition was because of that daycare center and having a sort of commercial space. And in working with the neighborhood and the city planning, we have been able to come up with a site plan that is more agreeable and more amenable to all the parties involved. As we talk about density, we, we are limiting and capping it at 20 units with some single-family offering, which was Chad's suggestion, and I think that was a great recommendation to have mixed housing. So we have some townhomes along Rimrock and then some single-family homes that align better with the neighborhood and some park space dedicated, well, park space for the neighborhood to use. So with these changes, we were able to get more, more of an approval from the neighborhood because of the visually appealing sense that they were getting from it. And then from a sightlines perspective as well, which was a key thing we wanted to address, we didn't want a lot of, like, a high-rise feel to it, so we are limiting it at two-story buildings. In terms of the application that was submitted, I do want to call out that we did conduct a traffic study as well, which was a big part of the conversation the last time we were here. And with that traffic study, the results were less than 2% addition to this because of this development to the neighborhood, so I do want to highlight that as well. And as an attachment, you might see the neighborhood approval document as well. We have approval from 46 households and four businesses in that area. So, and then many of them have emailed it in, many have provided their signatures, many have provided verbal approval as well. So that's a significant change from last time. With that, as the neighbors have mentioned, a lot of discussion has been coming up about the parcel to the north and then request for an easement. We have no information on what the development plan is for the other three acres. So just to blindly agree to an easement with no information is just not a feasible thing for our development. And with the traffic study, we have done it with a max capacity of 20 units to go through our property. And anything that we add towards the north would greatly impact the neighbor, the residents of this specific development and would skew the traffic study that we have conducted. In addition, paying HOA members are going to be impacted when there's additional traffic going through that were not part of the HOA Association to begin with. This is a condo ownership model and we want to respect the future residents as well and what they would want to see in the neighborhood. So those are some aspects.
Okay, thank you. Jay?
Yeah, as the council will recall, when this came to us last year, I was violently opposed to it because, because the neighbors, who I represent, did not want it done the way it was being proposed. So I appreciate the developers taking the time to meet with all the neighbors and to get them to come up with something that they could support. So I will vote in favor of this tonight. Now, before, before we get too carried away, I do want people to understand that there's, I've heard the word easement about 60 times tonight regarding this parcel. And that's a decision that is not being made at this time. So there's nothing in here that says there's going to be an easement or that there isn't going to be an easement. That's, that's a further discussion that will come down the line and the developer will have to work with the planning department regarding that, so. But in any event, I'm going to vote in favor of this comprehensive, or the Comprehensive Plan Amendment.
Yes. Joe?
Can you summarize the opposition that folks had to the daycare?
I think it was the traffic primarily that would be coming in and then having a commercial space. And I think the biggest was, biggest thing was, what if the daycare fails? I think in a previous recorded meeting, somebody brought up the fact that it could be a liquor store, which I know there's restrictions from what the city will allow. So I, I'm, you know, wasn't part of the process, but still, so that was one of the biggest opposition is if it fails, what happens next to the building?
Okay, I have a lot of thoughts on that. I mean, was there any talk about how putting the failure or success of the building aside, was there any way to, to have built it without having traffic issues? Like, is there a way to put it in a different place or adjust it a certain way that would...
Yes, so another proposal was made where we were separating the daycare center building and the exit off of Rimrock for the daycare center and then having private residences off of Maloney. But the daycare was a big point of contention in the last common council hearing.
Jay?
Yeah, Joe, I think the issue is that daycares are not doing very well right now. And once you rezone it for that use, there are other uses that are, that are acceptable in that kind of zoning category. Now, I don't think a liquor store is. I think a liquor store, that requires a business highway, I think, doesn't it, Deanna?
You, you...
Yeah. And, and the daycare would be a different type of business zoning. So it wasn't going to be a liquor store, but it could be a bunch of other things that the residents might find, you know, not appealing in their neighborhood. And even with the separation, you know, you just, I think there was just some concern about what would happen over time. And, you know, the fact that daycares are, you know, that it's impossible to hire daycare workers these days. And we've seen, we've seen a couple of daycares in Pittsburgh just simply close because they can't find enough employees to make it work. So I think that was the concern and I think that was a valid concern. And, you know, you don't really, because of the, the nature of the, the neighborhood, you don't really want a convenience store there. You don't really want, retail over there is probably not the best use there, especially, you know, when you consider that retail establishments are going to have, you know, 30-foot parking lot lights and all that kind of stuff. So I don't know. I, I think, I like this plan mostly, so, so, but, you know, as, as I pointed out before, we're, we're still a long way from actually having a plan that's going to get approved. So there's a few more steps to go.
Bill?
Yeah, I, I realize we're only entertaining the future land use, but they've got this lovely picture in front of us, so I feel like I want to ask a question about that. And Professor Higgins, maybe you can weigh in since you're on Carpsy as well. But it just seems like that north-south private drive would be completely unnecessary if you put the houses along Maloney Drive. And then you wouldn't need nearly as much stormwater retention pond. You'd have more open space preserved. What's, what's the, and, you know, less maintenance, less cost, less everything. What's the, what's the rationale behind putting that road in?
So to understand it better, so you're saying why have the road go from Maloney to Rimrock?
I'm saying, take the single-family homes and put them along Maloney Drive instead of on the private drive.
Yeah, so that was part of, I think, when we actually go and work with the city on the stormwater requirements, how big that is going to be, the houses might shift a little bit, but I think primarily it was the ideal spot when we did the construction evaluation with McKee and Associates. That was the ideal spot for stormwater retention. So based on that, from a fitting perspective on the site plan, the houses had to kind of be tailored to kind of curb. Does that answer your question?
Well, I mean, okay, so if, land can be graded, right? And I'm just thinking, it, it seems awf, like awfully poor land use to put in a road if you could get by without one, just for the impervious surface area and the, you know, the additional maintenance that you have to do for the rest of eternity.
Sure. And I think the next step that Deanna is setting up for us is to work with the folks that are going to help us through their stormwater retention and, and the road aspects of it in addition to utilities and where those would physically lie on the property. So I, I believe this could be cleared out in the next step of the development process after the CSM is complete.
Jay?
Yeah, I also share the concern about the daycare. I don't know where you've been, Jay, but people I've been talking to, young couples have actually been told to put their name on waiting lists now, even before they have children.
For some, yeah.
So, you know, I shared, I shared that concern, but, you know, I think it's, we need the housing. And also, I just want to commend you for your... And also, I just want to commend you for your persistence and your commitment. You got beat up the first time you were here, and the neighbors, you seem to have convinced the neighbors to change their minds, so I think, I just want to commend you for, for staying the course.
Thank you. We appreciate the city's support as well.
Okay, so I, I, yeah, I want to echo your gene because I work with a lot of daycare and they are thriving. I think there is a demand for daycare and, you know, we need more, and so I don't think that your, your comment was correct. So the other thing is, I was surprised that, you know, you voted down the first time high density, and now you came and, you know, voted another project that I, you know, I don't understand your, you know, the way you think sometime, but, you know, I don't know.
Well, I can, I can clear it up for you.
That's it, that's it. I am in charge of the meeting, so any other comments?
I have one.
No. Okay. All of the favor ordinance 2024-0-06 and Plan Commission Resolution PCR-04-24, say aye.
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 The motion carries. Thank you very much, Aisha. I wish you the best with your project and hope to see you soon. Thank you to the neighbor too for coming.
I move to postpone ordinance 2024-007 and Plan Commission Resolution PCR-0524 to the May 14th meeting.
Second.
By, I actually don't know why we're postponing, but I trust staff needs.
Yeah, because we didn't get proper notification.
Deanna to the rescue.
Yes, just briefly, staff just had a little bit of a staffoo on proper public noticing, so we just had to push back a little bit. So, no problems with it, nothing's changed it, and just had to make sure we crossed all of our Ts and dotted all of our Is.
Okay, thank you.
And we did discuss it Plan Commission if anyone wants to know.
Yeah, so it was approved, it's coming. So Board of Public Works.
Oh, we have to, we have to vote on the postponement.
Oh, you want to postpone, okay. So all those in favor of postponing to May 14th, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Thank you. So do you want anything to add, Gabriel?
No further report.
Okay, so now, now we move, Tracy, okay, for you, to Board of Public Works. So David?
I, I move we postpone resolution R 1124 to a date unknown.
Okay, all those in favor of postponing resolution R-11-24, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Okay, next one.
I move approval resolution R 5824, acceptance of 2024 through 2026 sewer televising bids.
Second.
Did Public Works approve?
Public Works approved.
Did Finance Committee approve?
Finance Committee approved.
Thank you. Okay, what is this?
Three-year contract to, to televise our sewer system. We, I believe we tried to get roughly, I think it's 10% a year, or it might be 10% over this three years, but this is going to the same vendor that, that did it the previous three years. Very satisfied with the, with the performance, and the, the price was very good compared to the three years ago also.
Okay, any comments, question? No? All those in favor of resolution R-58-24, say aye.
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 Any opposed, the motion carries. Next one.
Next, I'll move approval of resolution R 6424, authorizing acceptance of 2024 street resurfacing bid.
Second.
Did the Board of Public Works approve?
Public Works approved.
Did Finance Committee approve?
Finance Committee approved.
Thank you. What is this?
Well, this is our resurfacing projects for this year. The exact mileage escapes me right now, but it's approximately a $2.4 million project bid, and it's going to Payne and Dolan, who was also awarded the, awarded the project last year, so they are a local, certainly everyone knows a local, local vendor, and we're the, we're the best price.
Any questions, comment?
Yeah. I see Tim is on. Tim, I think we asked the question at, at the Board of Public Works meetings, and you, you didn't have the answer at that time, but do we know how many miles we're talking about this year?
About three, three miles.
Say that one more time.
Three.
It's about three miles.
I guess I just want to point out that in our CIP, we've got like 1.3-ish million budgeted per year, and that's supposed to cover about four miles of streets. So, I mean, I don't want to break out Misty's pet peeve, but it's almost like a structural deficit. I mean, we've got, Tim, you, you had said there's a, there's a fund that currently has $4 million in it, and I think later we'll see that there's another half million dollars from ARPA money. So we'll, we'll get by for the next few years, but only for the next few years before we run into problems.
So what was your question?
Well, I mean, we've got 140-plus miles of road in the city, and if an average road lasts 30 years or something, you know, that, that means we've got to resurface four miles a year-ish, and at current prices, four miles a year is going to be over $3 million instead of the 1.3 we've got budgeted.
Okay, you can add more money in the CIP.
I'm just giving you the heads up, you know? This is, this is going to be a problem.
So is, is that, I want to ask Tim, because I didn't know that, is, is the construction, is it, you know, the material, what is, what is, what is going up here? Is the labor, materials, you know?
Yeah, it's labor, materials, equipment costs for the contractor, all that increase will last, you know, several years.
Okay, so the, the, the city, you know, the, the city plan is to resurface how, like, four miles per year, isn't it? This is the goal?
Correct.
So, and if we have only $1.3 million in the CIP, so that one is going to cover only, what, less than two miles per year now?
Based on the, the current cost, yes. But what else the, the city hasn't done is, you know, once you reconstruct a road or resurface a road, you start maintaining it immediately. So you start crack sealing it once the cracks appear. That's what we're going to be starting this year. Once, once you crack seal it, you can go into your chip seal, so that the city hasn't done that. So once we've resurfaced these roads, we're going to give them more on a maintenance schedule. And then basically, you, you drag out that curve where road deteriorates, that, that curve doesn't drop off at, at speed, you make the longevity of the road last longer, and you get more bang for your buck when you start crack sealing and chip sealing versus just reconstructing the road.
Okay. Good to know. Any other question? No? Okay, so all those in favor of resolution R-64-24, say aye.
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 Any opposed, the motion carries. So thank you, Tim. So next, we move to Park Commission. So.
I move approval of resolution R 1224 renaming, a park renaming and high-field reserve development.
Second.
Okay, so let me see, do I have one? I have a resident sent, I don't know, this is, said Patrick Chaney. No, you, I don't know, but then I have Patrick Chaney, that he said, I don't know why he want to say, to be honest here. He said, please with all, and I don't have all.
I think he's referring to the arrows that he's representing.
Oh, he represented the East Fitchburg Neighborhood Association, and he wished to register only in support. Okay, there it is. Okay. I was confused, I thought it was something else. Okay. And then we have David Fahey, that he is here to answer questions. Okay, thank you, Dave. Okay, so what is this?
So the Fahey family, you know, has, the, the parks and things in this development are, are named after their, their family, his, his great-grandparents, his settlers, and family, family members, and also, not, not all of them, the Tipperary, I think, is maybe not a family member, but there's kind of a, a theme, and if you'd want, he, Mr. Fahey explained it better at Parks if you'd want to ask him to come up. But there, there's a significance to each of the, each of the names.
I'm a lifetime resident of Pittsburgh. My father, grandfather, great-grandfather, great-great, four generations farmed in Pittsburgh, and so we would like to name the parks after the family that farmed and the people that supported them, including their wives and sisters and brothers. So that's where the names come from. Monks, it was my, the original great-grandparents.
Any question, Jay?
Yeah, just.
I'll move next.
I was going to ask you to come up anyway to talk to us about Tipperary and Castle Bar.
We needed four names. And so our dog, when I was nine, was Tippy. And so, so we, in theory, we can't name a park after the dog, and Tipperary is a county in Ireland. And then, so that's how that one came about. And then we had 82 emails about what the fourth one should be, and Castle Bar is a name that we threw out for a road that got rejected, so that's how that one came about.
Okay. Bill?
Yeah, so in, in the agenda packet, there's a letter explaining some of the history here, and it, it says the history of the land starts in 1855, when John and Bridget Monks purchased it, but obviously the land goes back further than that. And I was going to mention this in the, in the Alder update later, but I'll do it now just because it makes sense. This Sunday, in the library, the Pittsburgh Historical Society is having a, a presentation on 10,000 years of history in the Pittsburgh area.
Oh, yeah, true, yeah. Okay, any other comments, question? No?
Yeah.
Jay, okay.
Scott, I, I noticed on this map, it called out Joe and Lucille Pond, but I don't, we don't normally name stormwater ponds, do we? Is that what the intent of this is? Are we going to put a sign there, or what's the story?
They do name stormwater ponds in Pittsburgh.
Yeah.
Some of them, maybe.
All of them.
All of them?
Yeah.
Well, it's not listed in the, it's not listed in the resolution here.
Well, I mean, it doesn't need to be in the resolution.
This is not part of the parks system.
It's Parks, yeah.
Yeah, so, okay, any other, please, silent, any other comment, question? All those in favor of resolution R-12-24, say aye.
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 Any opposed, the motion carries. Next one.
Next, move approval resolution R 1324, approval of park names in Hartong Development.
Second.
Okay, can you ask, did Park Commission approve?
Park Commission approved. Long story short, there were a number of, there were a number of names, but one was Farmstead, and, and people object, you know, had no real, well, it's a, it's a realistic name, it didn't have any specific tie, and so it was, it was suggested that be named Blaney after the, you know, family that had been there, been there quite a while, and we agreed, and so that was the main, the main change in that.
I, I have a point of clarification. So you are moving this motion forward as amended in Parks Commission, correct?
I don't, I don't believe we amended it, Mayor. I could be wrong.
I think we changed the name.
So from a.
We amended, amended, I'm sorry, yes, you're correct. We amended it to, to include Blaney, Blaney instead of Farmstead. You are, you are correct.
Okay, thank you.
I apologize.
And then I, I forgot, I have another form from Patrick Chaney, that he represents the East Fitchburg Neighborhood Association, I have to say because he's watching me right now, so. And I'm going to read this because, you know, the, they say, he said that the name offer of Farmstead Park was planned inappropriate and did not, did, didn't meet the rules with public comments during the board, during the, I don't know, I can't understand, public input time, the better name was Blaney Farm Park. So he's supporting Blaney Farm Park, okay. So, thank you. Okay, any other comments?
Yeah.
Yes.
Perennial Greenway seems like a pretty generic name as well. Why was there no problem with that when there was with Farmstead?
No, you know, no one, no one, well, I guess we, you know, people didn't, didn't have an issue with that one.
Is that maybe because it's more of a, a wetland stormwater management? I don't know.
You could be, you could be right, I tell you. I don't know for sure.
Okay, any other comment, question? No? All those in favor of resolution R-13-24, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Next one.
I move approval of resolution R 5524, approving new playground and swing set structures for Arrowhead Park.
Second.
Did Park Commission approve?
Park Commission approved.
Did Finance Committee approve?
Finance Committee approved.
Thank you. Okay, what is this?
So these, you know, if you, the age, the age of the, the equipment there, it's going to run its, run its course, and it's due for, it's due for an upgrade. And it's, if anyone, if you ride by there, like I do quite often on my bike, it's fairly heavily used, and there are a lot of children in that, in that neighborhood, and it's appropriate that we update, upgrade that equipment in that, in that park. It's, it's time.
And I think, Scott, but the other thing that I, I watched the meeting, and so the, the public and the neighbors' input was also involved in selecting the, the playground, isn't it? Yes.
You are correct.
Okay. So there were seven proposals, and they choose from one of them, so there was a lot of options, so. Okay, anything else? Any question? Oh, I have, who is? I have Joe, Bill, and Jay. Okay, Joe.
Yeah, just adding to Dave's, it's right behind Chalet Gardens, so if you, like, go down, there's like a walkable path that goes down there, and it, to Dave's point, it also intersects with like all the, what is it called? The Velo Under Round, where there's like four bike paths that go there, so it just, it gets a lot of traffic. I just want to reemphasize Alder Herp's point.
Okay, thank you. Bill?
Yeah, so I guess this is a, a smaller ticket item, but it's still $40,000. Moving forward, are we going to have replacement funds for something like this?
Yeah, we have replacement fund.
We will?
No, we have, in the CIP.
Oh, it's already there, you're saying?
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
There is, to a certain extent, replacement funds. I know we're working with staff, parks in particular, to ensure that we have a complete inventory of all the park system assets and that we have the most up-to-date pricing based upon what we're currently seeing. And Scott, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we're already seeing that $40,000 is perhaps not enough for playground equipment these days, and there might be a request to increase that to $50,000 per playground set. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Alder Jets, can I just make one comment? Yeah, Alder Jets, it brings up a, a good point, and I, I think the first step is Chad, Chad and Scott, you know, we have to identify all our, all our equipment and what the, you know, what, what would be a life, lifetime. life, lifetime, and we, we have to get a, we get, have to get a handle, I, we don't, right now, we have enough of funding for, we're building parks like crazy, but, uh, you know, I don't think we have enough funding to, to repair them, or, or, you know, upgrade them as time goes on, so it's a, it's a valid, valid concern that I, I share also, and I, I have some ideas on it that, uh, we'll, we'll hear late, here at some other time and other discussions.
Okay. Hey, Jay?
Yes, Scott, I was looking at, um, these seven options that are here, and I'm, I couldn't see in any of the documentation which one was chosen.
Is option five is from, option one from Lee.
Option five?
And is the first op, is the first option for Lee, is the name of the company, Scott? Yeah?
Well, it wasn't the company, it was which, which, um, which set of equipment.
There was seven, seven options, Jay, and it's actually option five in your information, which was the one option from Lee Recreation.
All right, and they're, they're saying that they're able to do this for $40,000?
Correct, all, all of the proposals are, are with a $40,000 budget.
Okay, well, I mean, that's fine, I, it's, it, I do agree with what Dave just said, though, that I think moving forward, that may not be enough, I mean, there's a lot of kids that live up there, and I don't know how many of them can play on this, in this playground at the same time. But, I mean, that's a, that's a discussion for a future date.
Yes, okay, any other comment? Okay, all those in favor of resolution R-55-24 say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries. Next one.
I move approval, resolution R-5624, accepting subdivision improvements for second amendment to the agreement to subdivision improvements in the plat of Crescent Crossing.
Second.
Did park commission, park commission approve?
Park Commission approved.
Did the Board of Public Works approve?
Public Works approved also.
Okay, so what is this?
So there were, uh, uh, in lieu of parkland, you know, dedication fee, the developer decided to develop, uh, develop the dog park and a little, uh, you wanna call it a pocket park, or a little, uh, playground park, and kind of in a, in a, uh, kind of in a front yard area, and so they did this themselves, the, they put in the infrastructure, and, uh, Parks has inspected, inspected these, and this is, uh, you know, basically, accepting these, uh, facilities.
Any question, comment? No, okay, all those in favor of resolution R-56-24 say aye.
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 Any opposed, the motion carries, thank you, thank you, Scott, um, so next, we move to the Library Board, any, um, update?
Nothing to report.
Nothing, okay. Uh, Commission of Agent Well?
Uh, we are meeting on, uh, Thursday.
Okay, uh, RCC?
Two updates, this weekend, April 13th, is the Spring 2024 Recycling Day, uh, at City Hall, it will be, at City Hall, there will be, uh, from 8:00 AM to 11:00 AM, we will have confidential paper recycling, and also electronics recycling. Some of the things that people don't wanna recycle for electronics do require costs, like if you have a big TV, so it's worth looking up on, online first, what, what is possible before you bring, and make, make sure you bring some money if, if needed. Um, we will not be doing med drop this year, unlike past years, so no med drop for this one, uh, and, yeah, so please share it out, and Chad, is it possible to do a, notify me?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, and then, second thing, we had to reschedule our waterway cleanup because the weather was pretty terrible, uh, this past weekend, so the waterway cleanup is now April 20th, from 9:00 to 11:00 AM, so same, same situation, but it's gonna be April 20th, 9:00 to 11:00 AM, and if you search Pittsburgh Waterway Cleanup, you can find the website where it has some more information. Thanks.
Thank you, Gabriella.
Question?
Yes.
Um, so for the electronics recycling, if people have old laptops that have just been, like, sitting in their basi, I'm just asking for a friend, um, sitting in their basement for years, and they have no idea what's on the hard drives, and they don't want to take the time to look at what's on the hard drive, is there some guarantee that these things will be disposed of, shredded, uh, correctly, without anybody tampering with the contents?
I don't know the question, that off the top of my head, but the company that we, that we contract with to do this, like, they have really specific information on their website, so I would, I would check the website and see, and it, and, or come to the, come and ask the question, but it's a good question, I, I don't know.
I will say, um, you know.
Trust no one.
Don't do it. Remove the hard drive. Okay, uh, thank you, uh, so next, we move to, um, Transportation and Transit Commission, and we have an ordinance.
Yes, I will move approval of ordinance 2024-0-08, updating the Bicycle Committee to become the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee by amending ordinance sections 6-554 through 6-556 of Chapter 6 of Pittsburgh General Code of Ordinances.
Second.
Okay, so, uh, I want to.
As amended by TTC, thank you.
Okay, I want to clarify that, okay, so I have two registered, uh, I have Andy Pot, he wishes to speak in support of the, um, the ordinance as amended by the Bike Committee, I don't know you want to come, and then also Mark Hamilton, he wishes to speak, I don't know, is in support or no, because I don't have the checkbox, uh, as amended by the Bike Committee, I imagine as in support, Mike? Mark?
I'm gonna hand this out, this wasn't out on the website till before block seven, so if you all take a look at that, it should be in the copies.
Um, I'll, I'll also just note for the public that if you look at the Bike Meeting on, um, the Bike Committee meeting on, uh, Fact TV, um, and review the minutes, that uh, should give a summary of what, um, we talked about, but obviously, our members will speak to it as well.
Yeah, good first, true. Good evening, um, here in, to speak on the ordinance, uh, 2024-0-08, uh, so just a quick history of the Bike Committee, this came about as a recommendation from the 2017 Bike and Ped Plan, uh, at the time, there, there was a recommendation to create a Bike and Ped Committee within the city of Pittsburgh, I won't get into all the history, it was ultimately created as a, a Bicycle Committee, and we're now to the point of reviewing the Bike and Ped Plan from 2017 to update that, and so there is an interest in adding pedestrians to the purview of this committee, um, but I am here to, and I think, I think there's a general agreement that that is a good idea, that Bike and Ped should both belong within this committee, as was originally proposed in the Bike and Ped Plan, uh, it was also a recommendation from the League of American Bicyclists, who is the certifying board for, uh, bike-friendly cities, so that's who gives us our silver designation as a bike-friendly city, uh, but would just note that the ordinances proposed, uh, would remove the Bike Committee as an, essentially as an independent body, and would instead make it advisory to TTC, whereas currently, the board, or the body is advisory to the Common Council, as would be the case with any other, uh, city board that does not have a specific designation like that, um, so I'm here to, uh, note that the Bike Committee did pass this ordinance, but amended it, uh, to instead create a Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission, um, and then largely mirrored the changes that were included by TTC to specify that the chamber representative would be non-voting and have six Pittsburgh residents, uh, would otherwise update references to include bicycling or walking, and would also, um, retain the Bike and Ped Plan, uh, would be the purview of this body, and really, just to reiterate, I think this body has done a lot of good work, um, the Bike Committee took the lead on getting B-cycle brought to the city, the membership of the committee essentially wrote a tap grant for the city of Pittsburgh, um, which ended up getting the city over $320,000 from the Department of Transportation, uh, we've worked with the Department of Public Works on improving bike and safety within the city, um, so I feel that demoting the, the Bike Committee to simply an advisory committee of TTC would be ill-advised, uh, I also don't believe that that would be within the spirit of us remaining a bike-friendly city to, uh, take what had been a committee reporting directly to the Common Council, and then, uh, put it underneath the TTC, so Mark did hand out the amendment that was approved unanimously by the Bike Committee, um, again, that wasn't originally included in your packet, so we wanted to make sure that you had a copy of that, uh, but can certainly answer any questions that you might have.
And I would, good evening, I would add, uh, I'm Mark Hamilton, I'm a 32-year resident in Pittsburgh, I'm currently the chair of the Bike Committee, uh, I live in Seminole Ridge, and I'm retired from UW Health, um, I think a couple things, I won't repeat what Andy said, but what I'd like to say is that, um, we've spent a lot of time talking with the Bike League about moving to Gold, and I've had people on this council ask us to move, get moving in that direction, to take on PD, uh, PD, I'm an old healthcare person, PD, can I start it, pedestrians, sorry, as part of our role, and we're gonna be doing that, we are also, have submitted the plan of the city to move towards Gold, we've submitted the plan of the city to update the Bike and Ped Plan, if it gets moved down under a committee, commission that already has 17 to 21 priorities, we're extremely concerned that we're, it's gonna get buried and lost, and it will lose, is what Andy said, us being, um, a committee that is viable in this city, I think it's done a lot of great work, I can honestly say the time I've put in since I've been retired to help this committee and build a committee that is effective, um, and doing good things, and so I ask that you would consider taking the amendment as the Bike and Ped Committee planned, and have passed that, change the name of the committee, make it a commission, and then we will get on with the business of keeping things done, and we were supposed to come speak to this council, I think in April, this meeting, actually, uh, about what we were going on, I came to this group about three years ago, and talked to you everything that was going on with the Bike Committee, so I just would ask you to consider this, we think it's very important, if we're going to continue to be a bike-friendly city, so, I think we'd entertain questions.
Okay, I have a question, um, so do we require to be, uh, the Bike Commis, Committee, it has to be an independent body to apply for Gold? You know, do we have more points, or?
I think what the Bike, and Chad was on this call with the Bike League, as was Andy, they told us they wanted to show more strength and involvement from the city about the Bike Committee and movement of biking, but I don't recall where it says specifically, it's gotta be that, I think the key is, we're concerned, you're burying it under another commission.
Okay.
That's, that, and I'm honest about that, so that's what I feel.
Jay?
Andy, you had mentioned a tap grant, is that what you said?
Yes, Transportation Alternatives Program, so it's a DOT program for, uh, it's indirectly federal money, but, um, it's money that is set aside for bike and pedestrian infrastructure programs, so a large part of the B-cycle program is actually paid for through a federal grant.
Okay, so, um, the recommendation that we have doesn't include this, these amendments, right?
Correct, what's on the table is what was amended at TTC, which is listed in the referral sheet.
Okay, yeah, and I saw that, all right, so in that case, I will move to amend this with these recommendations presented tonight.
Okay, um, discussion?
Well, Lee, can I add one more point?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, as the Bike Committee talked, we did agree that we would restructure it to move, to have pedestrian, uh, representation down the road, and that we would send a member to the regular meetings of the T, and T Commission, so that there's continued, um, linkage between the two groups, so.
Yeah, I was just gonna say.
Okay, one other time, first, sorry, Bill, Joe was first.
Um, I don't, I don't have to repeat what, um, my fellow committee member said, but, um, I just wanna emphasize the, the kind of dedication that the Bike Committee has to, to this work, and, uh, the amount of effort they, they put in, and the, and the results that it's produced, um, and I fully support all these changes, uh, voted on them, and, um, I, I think biking is a huge priority in the city, it's kinda one of the things that makes us shine.
Okay, thank you, uh, Bill, and then Gabriella, do you want to?
Yeah, at, at the TTC meeting, um, there was, um, support for, well, actually, I, it was almost conditional upon our, uh, approval of this, that we change the TTC ordinance, so, so that, um, we get a member in our commission from the Bike and Ped Commission, rather than from the Board of Public Works, so, um, be expecting a follow-up ordinance change once we finalize this.
Okay, 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 uh, so you want to add what?
Well, I mean, is it appropriate to make that ordinance change on the fly tonight?
Yeah, please, no?
No, no, no. No, that requires a different action with a different, different notice.
Okay, oh, yeah, because we have to do notice, sorry, sorry, it was, it's an ordinance, okay.
I, I guess, um, so I appreciate your comments, and I, I understand where you're coming from, because it, I, I know the Bike Committee's done a lot of good work, and we obviously have a great biking, a really strong biking community in Pittsburgh, which is really impressive, I guess I don't see putting it under TTC as a, as a negative, I see that as an opportunity for those two commissions to collaborate more, and I think that starts with making sure that we have a Bike and Ped member as part of the TTC, but Transportation and Transit Committee is, is in charge of, is, is charged with, is what it should say, all transit in the city, um, which includes bike and pedestrian, so I think them working completely separately, I don't think that makes sense, because I think the transit as a whole is, is comprehensive, so rather than it being a negative, I think it's actually a positive, I think it indicates that, that the Bike and Ped Committee will be an integral part of Transportation and Transit's larger conversations around transit as a whole, uh, and increase the coordination through that change in the, in the ordinance that I, I hope will be forthcoming, and I'd love to, if the Mayor doesn't sponsor, I'd love to co-sponsor it with you, Bill, um, so, yeah, I, I guess I just, I just don't see this as a negative, um, I, I see it as a positive.
If I can add one other piece to this, and I didn't say this earlier, we look upon biking in this community as transportation sustainability, fitness and recreation, all four, not just that transportation piece, and we're trying to push the other things, some of you know the work the Chamber's doing to sell us as a biking city, and I, I respectively think it needs to be looked at and kept up high enough so it doesn't get buried down within the bounds, I'm one opinion, and that's the way I feel about it, so.
Uh, Jim?
I just have a concern about the word advisory, I mean, with all the work that they're doing, it makes it sound like then TTC can say no, and I think that they just have done so much work, where, why wouldn't they be independent, I, I just don't, plus I don't understand why this came up, to be, to be honest with you, um, if anybody can enlighten, enlighten me, why would you want this change, and what was the reasoning behind it?
We'd like to be enlightened, too.
Okay, so, are you gonna, can I say my piece, too? Um, what?
Everybody's getting one tonight, everybody's getting a shot tonight, yeah.
No, no, I, I, you know, because I read the two, the two, um, the amendment from the two committees, and, you know, we, they have a lot of in common, both of the, both of the commission, one Sikh resident, one alder, one, um, representative from the Pittsburgh Chamber, you know, I am okay that the, the Bike Committee is, um, lead body for the Bike and Plan and Pedestrian Plan, you know, it should be there, um, you know, um, and I think, you know, the advisory part, uh, for me is something that, you know, I am indifferent, but I think that I, you know, they can, they can collaborate with TTC without being different committee, I don't know, you know what I mean, um, I don't see like a big deal that they have to be an advisory TTC, you know what I mean? I don't know, uh, but they can collaborate, and if they have a representative, you know, from the Bike Committee in the TTC, you know, the collaboration is there, you know, um, so I, I, you know, I am not like, you know, can't say, uh, so concerned about that they have to be an advisory committee to, you know, to TTC, you know what I mean? If we needed, we need this committee to be more independent, autonomous, so we can get the goal designation, you know, so I think that one is, uh, I think it's a positive to see that it can remain independent, so that one my two cents, I don't know, Joe?
Yeah, and I, I just think, um, you know, the composition of TTC could be different in the future, and may not, you know, there's a risk it may not be supportive, or it may hold up kind of the work of the Bike Committee if there were different members of it, so I just think being able to have that direct line to council would be, would be preferable in structure, um, because it would be able because it would be able to weather, you know, changes that make or.
Okay, Jay?
Yeah, I think, I think as we're, as we're talking about this, a lot of the infrastructure that's involved with Bike and Ped is different than the infrastructure that's involved with transit and other forms of transportation. So I think it's important to have a committee that's focused on that particular aspect. When we created the Bicycle Committee 20 years ago, that was, that was the idea, was that we wanted to have, we wanted to have something that wasn't getting muddied with all the other stuff that Transportation and Transit does. And as was mentioned earlier, Transportation and Transit already has a lot of responsibilities that it has to deal with. So I do agree that there should be some cross-pollination, and what form that comes in, you know, I'm indifferent to what form it comes in. But I think we, I think keeping this committee is an important committee, because that's, you know, when we think about things that make Pittsburgh different, one of the things that comes up is our parks. We have parks all over the place. And one of the things that comes up is our bicycle infrastructure. That's, that's an important thing that makes Pittsburgh different than many of the other communities, even in Dane County. So I'm going to support this amendment.
Okay, Gabriela?
Yeah, I mean, I appreciate the comments. I feel like I'm convinced. I appreciate that the biking is, is more than transit. Like, I appreciate that point, because it's broader, it's health-related, it has more of those. And honestly, I think it's going to be, has the same influence regardless of which it reports to, to be honest, because I, you know, I think, but, that being said, I think the key would be to make sure that we have TTC and Bike Committee collaborate more. I think that's really at the heart of what we want. So I'll support the amendment. But the other thing I'll say is that I think the impetus for this resolution really, I mean, this has kind of gotten lost with like the hierarchy of the committees, but the point of this resolution was to add pedestrians to this committee.
Yeah.
Like, that's ultimately the broader purpose, and to make sure that we're, making sure that we're considering pedestrians in a, in a more highlighted way. And we think the Bike Committee is the best committee to do that and to have that focus. Yeah, so I think that's, that's the primary driving force of this, and the other issue is secondary. So I'm happy to have the amendment.
Okay, okay. Who is, okay, oh, Joe, and who is? Okay. No, Joe first.
No, I'll just add to the piece on transportation, or on pedestrians, is that I've definitely, over the course of the years, gotten more than a few outreach from residents who have disabilities, and, you know, looking about our sidewalks and walkability of our neighborhoods. So I think just a call out to the public that if there is an interest in that, or if you have people that are advocates, to please put them in touch with us, so that as we update the Bike and Pedestrian Plan, that we have input, you know, from all of our residents, and particularly those, I mean, everybody's, to some extent, has to, you know, transport by walking with, or, you know, use of a wheelchair to even get from your car to somewhere else. I think it's, it's a very broad, inclusive issue, and I welcome the change, especially as we update our Bike and Ped Plan.
We've looked at all 87 pages of this plan and gone through all the recommendations. It's mainly bike from the 2017 that Jay referenced, but there's about, there's a section in there that we've begun to tear into about people walking. And so that is a part of the commitment that we've made to the mayor and to Chad about moving this forward. So it won't get lost. The other piece I would add is that we work with other commissions in the city, the Parks Commission. We do a lot of work with Scott on parking and access to things. So I think we do go across this city, and I think we'll continue to do so. We just want to be certain that we can continue to do what we've been doing so far, because we've worked hard, and I think it's been a good committee to take the city forward. So thanks for your consideration.
Mark, you always spoke like nine minutes.
Oh, sorry. Why didn't you tell me it was three?
Joe, Jay?
Yeah, just one procedural thing here. So what, the original motion was to approve this as amended by TTC.
Yeah.
And then I made an amendment to incorporate this recommendation from the Bike and -- so the problem with that is that this doesn't mesh with the amendment from TTC. So I think I'm going to have to technically withdraw that amendment and change it to a substitute amendment. So I'm going to move this as a substitute amendment to the amendment from TTC.
Okay, so.
I just want it to be done right.
Okay, okay.
So do we still need a second?
I need a second.
Second.
Well, he withdrew his first amendment, correct?
Second.
Yes.
So now he's put a substitute amendment, which needs a second.
A second, and now we are voting for the substitute amendments?
You will be voting for the substitute amendment, but you'd want to ask if there's any discrete discussion.
Any other discussion? I don't think so. Okay, we are voting for the, all of us in favor for the.
So what you have on the table is a substitute amendment that would adopt, I'm sorry, would substitute the amendments made by TTC.
Okay.
It would substitute those amendments with the amendments made by the Bike Committee. That is what's on the table.
Okay. Are all in favor of this?
Aye.
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 Okay. The motion carried. Any opposed? The motion carried. Okay.
So now we're back on the main motion.
Now you're back on the main motion, yes. So now, any discussion on the main motion?
Any discussion of the main motion, no? So all of us in favor of approving the amend, as amended, the motion as amended. Say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carried. Okay.
We made it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so next, Sida, any update? Yeah, did you meet?
Yes, we met, we met last week. Let me find my notes here. Helen Bradley from the Madison B-cycle gave us an update on the B-cycle stations. It was a great, great overview of their success. Then there was also Scott Endel, Director of Parks, gave his presentation as he has given to this body in the past. What else? What else? Mike Zee gave his updates on developments, and basically that's it. I don't have anything else to add.
Okay, thank you, Randy. Next one, Agricultural and Rural Affairs Committee?
No, we have not met.
Not met, okay, thank you. Bicycle Committee?
The chair went over with three times of his allotted time in this meeting just now.
Okay. And then EMS Commission?
Next meeting is Thursday, 7 o'clock, Council of Chambers.
Thank you. So next, we move to the Healthy Neighborhood Committee.
We did stuff. On behalf of the Healthy Neighborhoods Committee, I would move approval of Resolution R 5724, approving the 2024 Funding Awards for the Healthy Neighborhoods Grant Program.
Second.
As amended?
As amended, yeah.
As amended, yeah.
Okay, okay, good, okay. People, you're confused with all the amendments, so.
Well.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so can you explain, you can explain this process, Jay?
Yeah, so we had, we had 15 applications originally. One of them did not produce documents to show that they were tax exempt, so that left us with 14. The 14 applications came to a little, almost $174,000. We only have $138,000 for this program. And I want to remind the council that that $138,000 includes $10,000 that was carried over from last year. So there's only, there was only actually $128,000 in the budget. But, so I do think we're going to need to increase that amount in 2025. But what, we, the committee did evaluations of the applications. Based on those, staff had recommended some funding levels, so we wanted to fund all 14 applications, just not to the amounts that they had originally requested. So in your, in your packet is the list of what we've recommended, and I hope that the council will support it.
Thank you. Deanna, do you want to add anything else?
I'm just here if there's any questions about it.
Any comments, question? The only thing that I want to mention, if you look at the list, there are a lot of food, you know, pantry, so there is a lot of, you know, demanding for, for food, you know what I mean? So food insecurity is kind of like, very concerning, and it's growing, and, you know, and I am glad as a city that we are helping to all of these food pantries. So I am very happy for this. So, but yes, so, there are a lot, okay. There are more than $40,000 that we are. So, okay, any other comments? No? Or Bill?
Yeah, I noticed there's a lot of just round numbers in here. I'm intrigued by Just Dane at $1,970, as well as Try For Schools at $14,952. What's the nature of those requests? That seems unusual.
Well, in the last, in the, in the previous agenda, we had the very detailed applications that they all submitted, which was very long. And, you know, the maximum funding level, the maximum funding level we would give to anyone is $15,000. So I don't know, do you have further insight, Deanna?
No, those were just the numbers that were requested in the application, and the applicants chose that number based on their needs and what they believe could be funded.
Usually when non-for-profit put this type of grant, they have a budget for each program and, or initiative, and this is, this is the budget that they have for maybe any specific program here in the city of Pittsburgh. And when they add all the cost, it's $14,952. But that's it, this is what it is. Any other comment, question?
Yeah, I do think that your comment, Julie, about the food programs is important, because a lot of these neighborhoods, well, all four of our, all four of our neighborhoods are basically food deserts. There is, there is no place to buy food within walking distance, or even within, you know, within a five-minute car drive. They're just, and I, this is something that we're going to have to address as we move forward. You know, I know we're, we're focused on housing right now, which is also important, but making sure people have food to eat. I was over in Southdale for, the River did some programming in Southdale last, well, they do it every couple of weeks. They take a truck over there, and people go, and, you know, I talked to some of the families who were getting food from there, and I think, I think they said they can get, they can get a total of 28 pounds, or maybe it was 40 pounds of food. And some of it was just basic stuff. They're not, you know, it's like peanut butter, milk, bread, you know, that kind of stuff. It's not like anything elaborate. So, and when I talked to some of those families, they said, you know, they didn't know what they would do if the river wasn't there to deliver this food. So these are, these are issues that are important, and they're pressing, and we're going to have to do some real work to figure out how to address these.
Yeah, so the total amount of, that we are providing with the HNI grant to food pantry is $51,000. So this is, you know, so, so, okay, so, who is first?
I kind of have a logistics question that I've been curious about. So how does the, so I work at nonprofits. I actually do fundraising for nonprofits professionally. So I'm always interested in lowering barriers for nonprofits, because sometimes the, the reporting requirements are insane, and with federal money, it is out of this world, absolutely bonkers. So I'm just curious, like, what level of reporting do we require, and is this a reimbursement, or is this a grant that we give upfront?
It's a, it's a reimbursement, and the amount of paperwork, I mean, that original packet, we were getting from some of these organizations, like, I don't know, the Boys and Girls Club, I think, submitted 30 pages of documentation with all their financials, and it's like, you know, it's, it's, it's a lot of stuff. But I presume that for most of these, it's just documentation they have, and they just made copies and sent it to us. I don't think they had to go and, you know, they all prepared a cover letter, and they prepared something talking about the program they wanted to actually provide. And some of these, some of these programs are not just Pittsburgh programs, so there were a couple of them that were like, here's, here's a $200,000 program, and we're looking for $12,000 or $15,000 from the city of Pittsburgh, because it's covering a broad area. So as far as that, that's more specific. But the other stuff, like, you know, the tax returns and all that stuff, that's, well, nonprofits don't have tax returns, but all those other financial documents. Yeah, so I, it was, it was voluminous information that we got.
Recording afterward that they have to submit before the funds are issued?
Before their funds are dispersed, yes. It's, it's pretty straightforward. I mean, we, we have to balance, you know, ensuring that we're proving that the tax dollars are used correctly and in a fair way. So generally, we just look for receipts that show that the money was spent on something that was aligned with the grant proposal, and, and something that's reimbursable.
Yeah, I assume that the Community Development Specialists will, will take over some of this work once they are hired.
Yes, this, this will go to the Community Development Specialist.
Yeah, I guess I'll just make a statement that I, I hope that we can take a look as we continue with this program, because I do hope we'll continue with this program, at how we can reduce the burden on some of these organizations. Because these are great grants, and like, it's important money, but having someone jump through a lot of hoops for this level of money is, I find, a frustrating thing. It's not something I want to perpetuate. And obviously, I want taxpayer funding to, to go to good causes, but a lot of these organizations are, have good reputations in our community, and they are well-known, and they are not a random miscellaneous group that's coming in out of nowhere. And I think we should look at where are the opportunities to trust these organizations to do what they do well, and not make them jump through a bunch of hoops that is not making the process any better.
Thanks. Joe, and then Joe, and then, okay, Joe?
Yeah, to that point, I think administrative burdens should be proportional to the level of funding that we're given, and, you know, these are max grants of $15,000. And I was at United Way, Jim used to be on the board, and I just, the review process for those grants was really big, and really lengthy, and time-consuming. We spent the whole summer reviewing grants, but these were like $100,000 grants. And so I completely agree with you. The comment I was going to make, though, is just about collaboration with the city of Madison. I know that as we were reviewing in personnel the role of the Community Development Specialist, part of it was like to sit in on the Neighborhood Resource Team meetings in Madison. I don't believe Southdale, like, the part that's in Madison has an NRT, so I would just say, as we look into, like, the Southdale neighborhood plan, and as we hire this new person, that we ensure that there's a really comprehensive look at what the needs are in Southdale, especially around food, so that we can have a collaborative approach to addressing some of the structural issues that exist in the neighborhood.
Randy?
Yes, I want to echo what my fellow colleagues have mentioned, but also with what Alder Allen has mentioned as well regarding the, just the need for, for food. It's just so evident from this process we've gone through of how necessary, how necessary it is that we, we were able to provide this small amount of money. But where I want to go with this is, we have an opportunity here also with housing. And I know, Jay, you and I, we've talked about this on the commit, and I think this body needs to take a closer look at how we can expand that with the HNI. Only one applicant came forward for home, and I don't remember the name of the organization.
The road home.
But there's an opportunity there for more affordable housing, to provide some additional fund, funding for, for some of the programs, not just food. to provide some additional fund, funding for, for some of the programs, not just food. So we should, we should take a further look into that as well. Keep that on the top of the list.
Jim?
Question for you, Deanna. Have we asked for feedback from the applicants about our application process? You know, what are the barriers that they're encountering? Because I agree with Joe and Gabriella. We did an equity analysis, kind of like on our process at United Way, and it came to some changes. And one of the things that the nonprofits said was the paperwork. You know, that's actually, you know, with these grants.
We have not to date. I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, Chuck.
Deanna, would you mind sending a copy of the application and the reporting documents to the council tomorrow? So they can see what the application looks like as well as the, the reporting document.
Okay, so we are ready to vote, okay? All of in favor or where are you? Okay, resolution R-57-24, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carried. Thank you, guys. This is a great program and we should be proud. Okay, Housing Advisory Committee.
Yes, we met yesterday. Well, we were, Scott Endel presented the Parks and Open Spaces Plan. We were like the 10th in line for that, I think. We wound up taking no action because Scott had told us that there's, you know, comments from all the other committees and commissions. So like plan, we decided to wait until we get past the first draft. Joyce Frye gave us an update on the Efficiency Navigator Program. It's in the approval process to ensure that the contract is within the city's financial parameters. There'll be a meeting apparently tomorrow with finance. And the contract is with Sustained Dane. Elevated Energy is going to be the subcontractor. So all that's got to be, you know, I's and T's dotted and crossed. And that will then apparently go to CETA. We got a new income requirements for this year from WEDA. And I guess the numbers have gone up again. So it's, you know, anything that was affordable in 2023 and now you're going to need a little more money to stay at that same percentage of area median income. We've received 13 applications for our housing specialist position and Mike is working through those, Mike Zimmerman. We should be seeing interviews in the next two weeks. Last Friday, there was a meeting regarding the affordable units within market rate. That's, you know, 10% of the units, that's 60% of AMI. I guess no earth-shattering repercussions from that as of yet. For, with regard to the rent-to-own townhomes project that we're working on, there's a meeting coming up on Monday, the 22nd, with the city administrator and city attorney, as well as with the Commonwealth Group and their experience doing this sort of thing in Madison. And then I think we probably got the same set of development updates from Mike Zimmerman as, as CETA did.
Okay. Thank you, Bill. Landmarks Preservation Commission?
No report.
And the Tree Advisory Committee?
They meet this Thursday at 4:00.
Okay, thank you. And we don't have any report from other committees. So now we, we're moving to the standing committee reports. And we are going to start with Finance Committee, Randy.
All right, very good. Motion to approve Resolution R-26-24, Amending the 2024 General Fund and Technology Budgets, Reclassification of Software Budgets.
Second.
Did Finance Committee approve?
Finance Committee approved.
Thank you. What is this, Randy?
Well, this is a new accounting standard. The Governmental Accounting Standards Board, also commonly known as GASB 96, requires additional reporting for subscription-based information technology arrangements. And all of the city software contracts must be logged, analyzed, shared with the auditors. And to better track this information or all software, software purchases, they should be charged to the account number of 245. And I think there's seven software subscriptions that are not 245 at the moment. And the city is moving those seven software subscriptions in under 245. So they're all under the same, same category. This is a, it doesn't affect the budget. And so just a simple majority. Misty's on, maybe she'd like to add to this resolution.
Misty, do you want to add anything else?
No, Randy did a great job. The only thing I would reiterate is that we're not changing the budget. We're simply changing the last three digits so that Finance has a little bit of an easier time complying with this new rule.
Okay. So, thank you. So all those in favor of Resolution R-26-24, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
The motion, uh, the motion passes. So next one.
Next one. Motion to approve Resolution R-54-24, Creation of a Revenue Collection and Write-Off Policy.
Second.
Did Finance Committee approve?
Finance Committee approved.
Okay, what is this, Randy?
The city's lack of formal revenue collection and write-off policy has been noted in, as an area of improvement in both the annual external audit and the internal control rev, review of municipal court. And then there's an attachment on the, the policy identifies criteria for uncollectible accounts and creates a process by which they can be written off from the city records. And if this resolution passes, the body will adopt the attached revenue collection and write-off policies. And I know, Misty, you've gone into some detail that there are dollars that have been uncollected since back in the 90s. I don't know if you want to elaborate further on some of the other uncollectibles?
Sure. So the, the bulk of what the city has as uncollectible is in the municipal court area, but there are some other sprinkled throughout other areas. I've never been able to actually write them off from the book because this formal policy didn't exist. So I do have balances back to the 90s, as Alder Udell said, that have just been sitting there, languishing. So now that, or hopefully, if this policy is approved, we have a process by which we can start cleaning up the books and writing those off and moving forward. So essentially following the purchasing policy as far as the levels that different authority is needed, but with a report back to the Finance Committee every year with any items that was written off as informational purpose. And then there's very clear items or situations or circumstances in which a write-off would be appropriate. That is all included in the policy.
Okay, I have a question, Misty. Under the allowance for doubtful accounts policy, what is the allowance that you are planning to establish? Is it a percentage of the, the outstanding receivable? How, how you're going to determine that percentage?
We already have an allowance for doubtful account on the books. So a lot of this stuff that has been sitting there for a long time already has a contra asset to account for that expected uncollectible amount. So that already exists.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Oh, Jay.
So, so there's, and there's somewhere in the 600 pages of budget, there's a line item somewhere where this number is collected, this amount of uncollected debt, or it's just sitting there as an asset? Or what does, what does this look like in real life?
So it's not part of the city's budget, other than I do have a small amount for bad debt expense in the budget. But again, since I haven't had a policy to be able to write off most of these things, that budget remains unspent for the most part. Where this is all housed is on the city's balance sheet. So it's an asset account with that contra asset account for the allowance for bad debt. You would see that on the treasurer's report that's done each month. The balance sheet is attached to that or in the annual audit that the city puts together. It's all on there as well.
How, how much is it right now? I mean, roughly.
So I would say it's a couple million dollars. Yeah, it's, it's large.
It was, it's from how many years?
Again, back, back to the 90s, right? It's been 30 years of bad debt that's been accumulating because this policy hasn't existed.
What typically might we see? What, what would be contributing to these things? I mean, are these like traffic tickets that never got paid? Or is there, is there interest accumulation? How does that work?
So the bulk of the old receivables that we have is municipal court. Again, there are some others sprinkled out, but the bulk of it is municipal court. Things that might cause it to be uncollectible could be bankruptcy. It could be death. It could be leaving the country. It could just be it's old and the person hasn't been able to be identified. So the city does contract with a collection agency to help us try to do these collections on our behalf. And one of the other options for when I'd be able to write it off would be if the collection company comes back to us and says, you know, this isn't going to be collectible. You should consider writing it off. And we would in that circumstance, too.
So my question is, are you planning to write off some of those outstanding AR this year? Okay.
Yep. So once the policy is done, staff will put together that full list. And as it outlines in the policy, we will present back to Finance Committee the list of all of the ones that we have written off. And then we'll also follow the purchasing policy. So I don't think there's any that are more than 5,000, but pretend that there was. That would have to get mayor's approval before we could actually write it off, as well as the report back to Finance Committee.
Oh, my, a new power.
Oh, yeah, watch out. Okay.
Question?
Yes.
Yeah, so I, some of the wording in there, I guess, seems maybe a bit contradictory. I'm wondering how this works. So it says, one of the conditions for, that was in the list for, you know, to write off some bad debt is that the debtor is a company which is no longer in business. And then it also says that the accounting entry that writes off the, the receivables does not constitute forgiveness and the debt is still payable by the debtor. So I'm wondering what form that takes. And then I guess, you know, back to the, the company thing. Will, it, can somebody declare bankruptcy and then reincorporate as a different company? And what would we do in an instance like that?
So that particular clause was mostly in regards to personal property taxes. So when, when personal property tax used to exist, which I'll remind everybody, it is repealed for next year. So it's kind of a moot point at some point soon. But if the property went out of business, the city would still try to collect it. But if the, the prop, if the business doesn't exist anymore, oftentimes those would have to be written off. And then we do charge back the portion to each one of the overlying jurisdictions in that particular circumstance. If the business still existed, but they chose not to pay, then the city was on the hook for all of that bad debt. So there could be a company involved.
Okay, any other question, comment? Okay, all those in favor of Resolution R-54-24, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
The motion carried. Thank you. The next one, Randy.
All right. Motion to approve Resolution R-61-24, Sale of Police Department Old AED Units.
Second.
Did Finance Committee approve?
Finance Committee approved.
Okay, what is this, Randy?
Well, the police department has 12 old automated external defibrillators, commonly referred to as AED units, in storage and that they've reached their useful life. So there is a rebate program through Cardial Partners for the old AED units. And the rebate through Cardial Partners is about $300 per AED unit. So if this resolution passes, this body will authorize the sale of the AED units to Cardial Partners for around $300 per unit. Am I correct on that, Misty? $300 per, per unit? I thought I heard something different during Finance.
I don't remember the exact amount, but if that's what's listed in the document, I would assume that's correct.
The documents in my notes, so. That's what we have for us.
Okay.
Do you, do you know how many AED units we have deployed throughout the city?
No, I just know of the 12 that, that are, have lived, outlived their life. I don't know total. Do you, Misty? No.
I do know.
But norm, normally, they would just be discarded and this was an opportunity to, to recover some money at the same time. And they'll be, what, refurbished? Yeah.
Okay, Bill?
What, how old are these things? And what does the replacement cost?
I don't know. I don't know if Misty does or...
So that I, so. Yeah, that I, I'm not aware of. But I, the only thing I could add, if it's okay, Chair, the police department did look at selling these by surplus instead, which is the more traditional way by which we would sell old assets. But surplus is not accepting AEDs at this point. And so really, this is kind of a way for the city to get a little cash, which is fantastic, but more so a way that we can get them another use without having to either scrap or junk them and have them go to a landfill or get recycled. So finding another use for them.
Misty, do you mind checking the police department Small Equipment and Replacement Fund? That's probably where they're listed. I think that they may have, my recollection is they get about a seven-year lifespan. And I think typical new cost is, I think, $1,000, $1,200.
That's what we, we're about to buy some and they're about that range.
So that's, that's a significant rebate then. That's nice. Better than taking them to the electronics recycling this weekend.
Yeah, you should be, yeah, we are recycling those. Okay, all those in favor of Resolution R-61-24, say aye.
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 Any opposed, the motion carries. So next one, Randy.
Motion to approve Resolution R-62-24, Amending the 2024 Budget and Various Funds, ARPA TID Closure Investment Plan Projects.
Second.
Did Finance Committee approve?
Finance Committee approved. I think I'd like to have Misty speak to this one, since, given the complexity of the, of the resolution. If, if you don't mind, Misty.
We would need.
Is that okay, Chair?
Is that okay, Mayor?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So included in the packet is the list of the handful of projects that staff would like to move forward with. These are being presented to you as a result of the investment plan getting approved recently and things that we would like to move forward with in 2024 that have not yet been budgeted. The thing to keep in mind as we're looking at this list is that they are all, are all ARPA-funded. ARPA funding has to be spent by the end of 20, or contracted by the end of 2024 and spent by the end of 2026. So handful of projects. It's the blue section on the attachment. The white section is all the accounting back and forth entries that I have to do. But it's the blue section is kind of, is the one that's the most pertinent. I'm going to skip the first item, but it includes $500,000 for road resurfacing in qualified census tracts and/or healthy neighborhoods areas. Originally, in the investment plan, we had wanted to spend 1.5 million on this project. That was pared back in 2023 to a million because there was a lack of funding available. But now that the TID foreclosure money has been so much more than what we originally thought, staff is recommending we continue with this project up to the original intention of the 1.5. So it's an additional half a million there for that road resurfacing. There is $25,000 for the Police Facility Impact Fee Study and Implementation. That was talked about during the investment plan. Another $50,000 for outreach. That was talked about in a new project in the investment plan. Looking at the AV equipment, that was a project within the investment plan that we had spent the bulk of it earlier. We identified a couple more conference rooms in City Hall that would benefit greatly from additional AV equipment. So $5,000 for that purpose is being requested. There is $200,000 for electrifying the city's general fleet. So this would include a pilot program of a handful of electric vehicles and that would be used mostly for administrative functions. So assessing, building inspection, finance and admin would, you know, share a vehicle. That, those five purchases, as well as the charging infrastructure, likely at the library, City Hall, and perhaps an external one, too. So total project budget of 200,000. There's a lot of work that staff needs to do to figure out how to best deploy that, which those purchasing things would come through you still in the future. And then for the water fountains, there was a new water fountain at Belmar and a new water fountain at Hugo Jamestown that was authorized in the original investment plan. Both of those projects... Both of those projects has come in under budget. So staff is requesting that we use that savings there, the amount under budget, to also replace the water fountain at Chicory Meadow Park. So those are the true, like, projects that staff would like to move forward with in '24. Also included in this budget amendment, though, is $300,000 for administrative charges. Obviously, the priority on behalf of staff, and I suspect on behalf of council, too, is to put this ARPA money to good use on one-time projects wherever appropriate. But because it has a clock on it, you know, it has to be under contract by the end of '24 and spent by the end of '25, we wanted to have a little bit of a flexibility in case some of the projects that are under contract on 2024 end up costing less. And we don't want to have to return any of this ARPA money that we received. So included in here is a, I'll call it a buffer of up to $300,000 that could be used on administrative costs if the other projects come in less than what we originally thought that they were going to be. I don't think that we'll spend much of that money. I know I do have to do an audit kind of equivalent project, which will be $5,000 for this year. But the hope is that the money will be spent on these other projects first and the admin costs just as a backup plan.
Okay, thank you, Misty. We have a question. Jay?
Yeah, I've got two questions. So the, the water fountain, does that mean that we put those two water fountains in and it was $7,000 less than what we had originally expected?
So they're not in yet. They've been purchased and we're working on the details for the installation. But the updated cost is that, yes, there'll be a $7,000 less cost than what we originally planned.
Groovy. So when you put administrative costs in at $300,000, that's about a third of this total number here. Is that going to raise a red flag when we say it's costing us $300,000 to administer $700,000 in projects?
So under the grant rules, we're allowed to put up to 10% of the cost as admin cost. And so we received 3.2 million. And so the 300,000 is a little less than that 10% that we would be allowed without any question.
That's not just for this project, these projects that you have here? Okay.
Okay, any other question, comment? Okay, so is, we need two-thirds of the vote. We are doing roll call.
Thank you, Mayor. Alder Allen?
Aye.
Alder Gerhert?
Aye.
Alder Herbs?
Aye.
Alder Jetzer?
Aye.
Alder Maldonado?
Aye.
Alder Strassman?
Aye.
Alder Udell?
Aye.
Alder Wheeler?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. So, thank you. So next, we move to Public Safety and Human Services.
Personnel.
Oh, personnel, sorry.
I'll move approval of resolution R 2724, amending the 2024 general fund budget, employee referral of police officers program.
I made a mistake.
Second.
What they need to say is the personnel? Oh, no, fine. Okay, 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 sorry. Why, it's 10 o'clock, it's 10:30. Okay, sorry, Gabriel.
Yeah, so personnel actually didn't have a chance to look at this, but we, I can talk about it because we did it last time.
Yeah, we know.
But finance did look at it.
Okay. So the personnel, you didn't talk about that, okay.
No, but finance did.
Did finance committee approve?
Finance committee approved.
So this is an extension of the program that we approved last year. It's using vacancy funding to pay for a referral fee. And it's a pretty, it's a pretty good referral fee for the staff. We, back when we first approved it, we bumped up the numbers because of the amount of vacancy savings. So this is continuing that program out for another year.
Any comments, question? Jay?
Yeah, do we know how many employees have taken advantage of this?
Yeah, I think about two.
I don't know.
I think there were two or three.
Yeah.
Two or three employees, and I think one employee referred two people, if I recall correctly.
Did they result in hires?
Yeah, yeah, there's, they have to be hired. And then there's an initial payment and then they have to be here a certain amount of time for them to get the second half of the payment.
Okay, all those in favor of resolution R dash 27 dash 24, say aye.
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 Any opposed, the motion carries. Okay, so next, we move to Public Safety and Human Services. Any update?
Just a quick, just a quick update, you know, things are picking up now. We, we're seeing graduation parties get scheduled. And coming up, we have a autism walk and a, it's called the Puppy Walk. It's a walk to raise funds for a dog, canine, cancer research coming up here. So things are starting, we're getting that season where things are picking up. And we'll have, instead of three, three items on our agenda, we're going to have a dozen here pretty soon. So that's all.
Thank you, Dave. Okay, so next, we move to new business and we have a direct referral. So, Randy?
All right. Motion to approve resolution R dash 77 dash 24, amending the 2024 budget for various funds, 2023 carryovers. And this is a corrected, corrected resolution from last week.
Second.
I'm not sure if, do you want me to go into specifics? Since we, we addressed it last time around, Misty, we're basically rescinding, correct? The previous? And Bill, Alder Jetzer noted the incorrect posting. It's a spreadsheet and the negative amounts were not, they were hidden, correct, Misty? And once they're opened up, the dollars do balance out. So I think, just to be transparent, so staff recommends that the council rescind the original carryover budget and amend the approved, approved by, approved. This is the corrected version, basically.
With all the rows.
Let's just get to the point.
With all the rows. Okay. Misty, do you want to add anything or?
No, thanks, Alder Jetzer, for identifying the problem. Glad we could get it fixed, both where it becomes a bigger issue. So the difference, yes, is just the offsetting revenues were hidden when they shouldn't have been. So the projects are all the exact same. The dollar amounts for the projects are all the exact same. It just shows those offsetting revenues.
Okay, thank you, Misty. So, okay, so we need a two-thirds vote for this one. So we are doing the roll call again, okay? So.
Thank you, Mayor. Alder Allen?
Aye.
Alder Gerhert?
Aye.
Alder Herbs?
Aye.
Alder Jetzer?
Aye.
Alder Maldonado?
Aye.
Alder Strassman?
Aye.
Alder Udell?
Aye.
Alder Wheeler?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. So we are at the end of the agenda, so mayor's report. I want to share with you a couple of things. So it's National Library Week from April 7 to April 13. So I think I want to say we are very, you know, you know, how to say, grateful to have a great library, public library in the city of Fitchburg. So please say thank you and, you know, recognize our library for this week. So the other thing I want to mention is I want to share, as I mentioned the last council meeting. So do you know, there was in the In Business magazine from April, there was the largest state county employers. Do you know if we have largest employer in Fitchburg? Okay, there are more than two.
Subzero.
Okay, I want to tell you, Subzero Group, Promega, Sembric, Agrees. Then we have Playcom, TriNorth Builders, Dental Health Associate has a Fitchburg address, so I want to count it. Gordon Fleisch and CDW. I don't know if they're still open, CDW. Yeah, there is. And then Part Bank, because Part Bank is in Fitchburg. So, you know, so it's great. We have a couple of good employers here. So the other thing I want to mention is I want to also thank Randy and Shannon. You know, tonight is your last meeting. And I want to say, after 40 years, you know, working with you, I want to thank you for your service. And I hope, you know, Randy, you and the county have a great ride. And then we're going to be in Contra, because I told you that, you know, I would like to meet with you because you are going to be representing Fitchburg. You know Fitchburg and it's great that you're going to be in the county ball. So, so I wish you the best in the county ball. Shannon, I wish you the best in your future endeavors. And also, I want to say that we have a, you know, the CARES program, Chad mentioned about is something that I, you know, I think some of you want to move forward with this grant. People are working the CIP. So the CIP is going to be to you maybe in one or two months. We are going to have that in front of you. Tomorrow, there is a ribbon cutting for Communication Innovation. It's in the building behind Hop House. We are, what was the building? Yeah. Raise, yeah, event. So it's at 12 o'clock. There's going to be a diversity summit on May 2. It's about economic development, so you want to attend, one of you. Please check out with Chad and Lisa if you want to be registered. It's a whole day event, so. I am planning to go to the icebreaker for the Great Emises Chamber of Commerce. We are going, Chad and Mike are going, too. This is a great business event. And then last week, we have a great meeting with the Latino Chamber of Commerce, you know, that we met with them to discuss the corridor and to discuss some additional partnership with the chamber. What is? Oh, something happened to me. I don't know. And also remember that next Tuesday is the organizational meeting. So you need to be here at 5:15. Okay, so remember that time, okay? So, so before we go to the other reports, I want to, oh, what is? I want to give you, Randy and Shannon, we can take a picture. This. Okay, okay, so this is for Shannon.
Thank you.
Okay, and you, Randy, I don't know, you guys want to say something? This is your last chance.
Well, I, I wanted to comment during my alder report, but I can do it now. I feel like I'm looking at here and I should be facing this way. But I would like to thank city staff. And I look at Fact TV and you guys are wonderful. But the entire city staff is terrific. And I mentioned this during finance, that finance department was, is, was extremely helpful in helping me as chair move projects forward and any questions I had. But the entire city staff, from the front desk with their smiley faces and always willing to help, to the police department and fire department and public works. It's just, it is, it's incredible. Yeah, yeah. We are very lucky, so, thank you.
I just want to say thank you to all my constituents and everybody I've worked with, city staff and members of the council. Thank you.
Thank you, guys, and I wish you the best, okay? Okay.
Okay, so I'll let you go.
Right on. Yeah, I just, I want to highlight the meeting that the mayor, myself and Mike and Joyce had with the Latino chamber. They just listed the amount of things they do and it, it was, I knew what they did, but I didn't know to the extent that they did the things that they're doing. And also, just congratulations from the, to them. They got a $5 million grant from Senator Baldwin's office. So I'm just really looking forward to the role that they have in our corridor and that they're a statewide organization and really support a lot of emerging businesses, especially in a lot of rural communities in Wisconsin that are rapidly demographically changing. They play an essential role in our economy and in our community. I also want to highlight some of the work that's happening with the teen center engagement or feasibility study. We've got 10 interns and two undergraduate fellows. The consultants are doing amazing work and have been engaging with residents, with city staff and with stakeholders. We did a presentation at the West High School Equity Summit to about 50 kids. And we're going to be Friday at Verona Area High School to present to another 50 kids. So it's just very happy to see this work and particularly that it's centering the voices of young people. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Dave?
So a couple of things. Jeff Rollinger and I met with the developer of the, kind of the upper quarry, the guy that has the option to buy and some exciting plans for things coming on up there. And we had our bicycle giveaway in Allied Dunn's Marshall Neighborhood on Saturday. Thanks to Fitchburg Bicycle Committee for, for helping staff at Allied Dunn's Neighborhood Association, Allied Dunn Health and the, and the four old white guys in my neighborhood that helped mechanics and Alder, Alder Udell and Brad for coming to help. We had a great crew, gave away 62 bicycles, a lot of, a lot of happy faces. So thank you to everyone that made this up. And free bikes for kids who provided the bicycles.
Well, thank you. Bill?
Just a couple of things, and these are actually for District, in District Four. The Osmondson Traffic Calming Committee met yesterday to discuss the process. There were maybe four, five residents present. And they told stories of speeders and tailgaters and aggressive passing within a residential street. So that was a little jarring to hear. The other thing is, on voting day, I went up to Fire Station One, which is the one that's closest to my house, and helped them pack up a little bit. And just wanted to give a shout out to the efforts of everyone there and especially Tracy's foresight in having a multiple vote tallying machine, since the first one malfunctioned about 5% of the way through the votes. So the backup machine had to carry all the rest of the votes.
All right, so a couple of weeks back, I, me and our transmission engineer Ross met with some neighbors, seniors on Chapel Valley Road, about 20, had some concerns about safety in the area, especially with pedestrians back and forth around McKee Farms Park. And so I want to thank Ross for coming out and meeting with the neighbors. It was really helpful to have him there to kind of hear directly and give them some immediate feedback. And we're going to look at some more immediate interventions like painting crosswalks and maybe putting up a warning sign. So it's an area with a lot of seniors and obviously a lot of kids and families because of the park. So deserves some attention. Second, I learned that there was a beaver in McKee Farms Park.
Oh, yeah.
I had heard about beavers in McKee Farms Park before, like, you're told from, from residents. I'd never actually seen one until a couple of days ago. I saw one actually swimming in the north pond. And then I noticed all the trees that immediately adjacent to the pond, a lot of them had been either cut into or cut down, clearly from a beaver. So anyway, I reached out to our parks director and he said that typically the beavers that make their way to McKee Farms Park relocate themselves over time because they just realize it's not a really great place for a beaver life. So they, they, so if anyone notices the beaver, we're just going to trust that the beaver will move on in their own time. And then in terms of the trees, those trees right around the pond apparently are not great for the stormwater pond anyway. So when they're removed, the beaver's just doing us a favor. We'd have to pay to remove those ourselves or have the parks staff do it. So thank you, beaver. We hope you find a better home very soon.
Okay. Jay?
Yeah, we've got a lot of stuff going on in District Three. Hartong Property is well under construction. And the good thing about that is it means no more blasting so that my neighbors and I are not going to get vibrated every so often. The Arlo Building is just about complete. And I believe the, I believe Hawks Bar is, I can't remember what the name of that one's going to be. Yes, Rusty Bee. So that one's going to be opening sometime toward the end of May. And then right next to my building, there's a, there's a big hole where they've been trying, trying desperately to excavate for a new apartment building, but... but it rains and it snows and it's been, uh, it, it's been a little slow going, so. I, I also wanted to say Shannon and Randy, it's been an honor to serve with you. You guys bring a perspective and even though you don't always agree with me, um, you bring angles that are, that are, that are valuable. And, uh, so thank you for serving. Um, we always, it's always hard to find people and it's, I'm glad you were willing to step up and take this, uh, chance. And Randy, you've got a new job and, uh, Shannon, you're going to keep looking out for that next office you want to run for. And, and the other thing is, you know, back in the day, we used to get wooden plaques, so these, uh, these, I guess it's a budget cutback somewhere.
Put it in the budget.
I guess it's a budget cutback.
I'll find it by spring.
Hey.
I got no report.
No report.
No, but, Randy?
Oh, jump right on down. Again, thank you. Thank you. It's been a pleasure working with all of you. Yes, as the mayor mentioned, uh, I won't be going too far. You and I will be talking often to make certain projects-
You're going to bring the money back here.
That's right, back to Fitchburg. That's right, that's right. Yeah, but, uh, uh, I also wanted to thank Tracy, the, I've got some great feedback on the new polling location. So, uh, November should be a breeze. Yeah. Again, thank you, everyone. And thank you for the, to the, to our constituents, yeah. They're, they're great, great, wonderful Fitchburg residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. So, um, so announcement, I forgot to mention, Tracy, I want to say congratulate you and your team and for, you know, another great election, so, okay. So next common council meeting, organizational meeting is April 16th. Next regular common council meeting will be April 23rd and the next committee of the whole is going to be April 24th.
Move for adjournment.
All those in favor of the adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Adios, buenas noches. The motion carries.